The planning board meeting of July 16, 2025. Start with roll call. I am welcome. Not here, Jen Bluestein.
Here.
Alden Clark.
Here.
Charlie Palmasano is not here. Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Rick Tager.
Here.
Jack McCarver.
Here.
Matt Pepper.
Here.
So we have proponents later on. We have five full members here and our two associate members. So if we have to add somebody to the vote. Should we get to that one?
This is the, this is Heather Shan, Chair of Planning and Development Committee, is in the tomorrow hearing, the planning board tonight, President of the Department. We are at four o'clock thirty. We're here to discuss to work this is, we're in so far, which is they propose any amount of change, but those who call me R1, R2. And where it's two oh five, which is a proposal to change zoning that. Over by Hill Street, we just build a problem.
Could you guys speak up? Okay, when you're here.
The air conditioning is like blowing behind us.
Sorry, we'll, we'll try to project our voice better. Sorry. So open the public hearing and direct report. Sure. Some of those.
Sure, and I don't want to overstep with the sponsor. The sponsor would like to speak to it. This is zoning map, two zoning map changes. I'm going to speak to just one initially. It's depicted on the map here. I have two different versions of this map. I tend to prefer the area of the photograph. I find it a little easier to orient once I'll do it. So. I'm going to put between these, but this is basically illustrating an area over on Low Street, just south of Low Street, where you see Colby Farm Lane. A little hand tool. This is Colby Farm Lane right here. This is the recent development that's taking place there. This is a bit older as a photograph, so we're not seeing something more important here. But it's the rezone these parcels right here, essentially upzoning it, as we call it, from R2, which is what's across the street here. And dragging that residential district R2 across the street to incorporate these lots here. Is, as you can see on this back here, the darker yellow is the R2. So in this case, it would be extending the R2 to incorporate these bars with here, where currently on this side of the street, it's R1. That is in the name, in summary, the nature of that sort of patch. I don't know.
Jim calling to the council of Ward five. Yeah, I'd like to add a little bit of color here. We do know that it is upzoning from R2 number one. And the simple reason is pretty straightforward and simple. Why I try to undertake this is these, these lots are kind of an island. Surrounded, an R1 island surrounded by R2, surrounded by an con. There is going to be some development that's going to happen. Further down the street at Kmart area. And what we're looking for is to take some of these lots that are bigger. And turn the. The leverage back to the homeowner, right? So if somebody lives in a big lot, wants to potentially split their lot and add another building or. Add a cul-de-sac or something like that, they should be able to do that. They should be able to do that while they control the property, not after they sell and develop or. Mine come in and have the same kind of idea. So there is no plan for development right now for any of these lots. But simply being a bit proactive in these lots, allowing these folks in some of the bigger lots. To have some flexibility and leverage as they maybe age in place, or maybe they have other plans going forward. And for those in the, who have smaller lots along the way, if they'd like to make adjustments or. Any type of remodeling that they might want to do, R2 has a smaller requirement. And so while some of them may never be conforming lots. The non-conforming will be less going forward. And again, all we're trying to do is, is put. The flexibility and leverage back into the homeowner's hands as opposed to having them not stop at an island. Benny has a question. Thank you.
Questions for the board? Will open up public comment. If you have a proposal.
My name is Kendall Hatch, of the 209 Low Street. So that's one of the homes that would be rezoned under this proposal. I want to start by saying that I don't see anything inherently wrong with the spirit of this proposal, especially if it might create more affordable housing options. For folks in the city. We were lucky enough to buy our home right before the pandemic, and I know that if we were looking now, there's no way that we would be able to afford to move into the city of Newburyport. But two family houses mean young families, more young families means children. And that's why I implore you to consider this proposal as well as any proposal. That adds dense, that has the potential to add density along Low Street through the lens of pedestrian and public safety. According to mass DOT data, about twelve thousand three hundred and fifty cars pass along the stretch of Low Street every day. And that's before, you know, putting the forthcoming 40B and the rec center aside. That traffic volume is higher than Marimack Street, State Street, it's higher than Route One Bridge. It's really only surpassed by High Street and Story Avenue. Yet unlike any, yet unlike. Every other one of those streets, Low Street, a main thoroughfare that is, that is at the same time very residential. Sidewalks on only one side. And crucially, the side we're discussing, the density tonight, has no sidewalk. I have a six-year-old son who just finished kindergarten at the Brez. During the school year, we walk together to school every, every morning. I live. Right where Bayvon comes down to Low, and so we only have to pop up. Two houses really to get to Murphy. But just that walk is, you know, we're, we're on the dark shoulder. It's really narrow. We get to that crosswalk at Murphy. And we often have to wait for several cars to pass before anybody will stop. The only traffic common device there. Is a sometimes battered station that sits in the crosswalk that gets pulled when it's, when it's time for filing. There are, there is some signage further down, but we've had more close calls at that crosswalk than I care to count. That crosswalk is the closest one to the Resna Han School on Low Street. About five hundred and fifty feet from the end of that crosswalk, the door that my son walks into to start his day. And it's for all intents and purposes, the only crosswalk that serves this entire portion of Low Street. Aside from, I mean, you have. Giuseppe's to Colby Farm. That's, that's the only one. The fact that a crosswalk so close to a public school is so dangerous is unacceptable. The fact that that crosswalk leads to nothing but a narrow, thick shoulder on the south side of the road is ridiculous. And to add further density here without any pedestrian safety improvements would be irresponsible. I don't need to remind you that an elderly woman was hit by a car in the crosswalk near Giuseppe's in April. A woman died after being hit by a car in almost the same spot two years ago. Families in Colby Farm have been pleading for safety improvements at their intersection on Low Street. And installing sidewalks on the south side. Proven pedestrian safety at Murphy Act can significantly alleviate these issues. I know that, that these, these issues are somewhat out of your purview, but I, but I encourage you. To consider that as you're considering this proposal. The city has a clear and immediate opportunity to improve pedestrian safety along a corridor that desperately needs it. I support the rezoning proposal in spirit, but I urge you before taking any steps to increase density, to first prioritize and commit to these essential safety improvements. Thank you.
Any other comments from the panel?
Hey, you're in. Eric O'Shea, so the 185 Low Street, so kind of the start of the proposal. So in a corner, we'll be in Low Street. So we're right next to the Colby Farm development, and we are absolutely for the rezoning. And do recommend that we move forward with it. While I agree with our neighbor, the traffic is definitely an issue. I think that is definitely a separate issue. I know that there is a proposal for the Colby Farm intersection with North Acton City to be redesigned. And narrow to try to slow some of the traffic, to try to have better crossings. That's absolutely imperative, but I don't think changing to R2 really is going to, you know, impact that in any, any fashion. I think that needs to be addressed regardless. Especially with the potential for the Kmart expansion. We really are just looking as homeowners, one is we're, we're pretty much on nile. We're next to extremely dense. Neighborhood that's really changed the feel of our almost three-year-old farmhouse. And so we really would like to be able to have a little bit more conforming. Location and lots to those surrounding neighborhoods. It doesn't really match. Plus, if you kind of look up Low Street and, and a lot of Colby in the area, most of them are not conforming today. So most of us as residents are being forced to, you know, conform to an R1 standard where. You know, a lot of the other houses don't even currently conform to that. They're closer to an R2 or maybe even less than an R2. So we are definitely for moving and changing this from an R1 to an R2. Thank you.
I'll bet a chance one point more Low Street. I just have a quick clarifying question, Andy, given the map backup. For the larger lots that sort of look like double lots compared to the ones in the before far northwest. Am I correct in thinking that those are large enough to subdivide them into two lots? This is R2, and if that's the case, we're talking potentially about. More dwelling units in those spaces? You don't have to answer right now.
Yeah, no, I agree. Because I think in generically speaking, I thought of the zoning industry because that's exactly sort of how we look at this, is what is likely to happen down the road. Just a quick, like, back to that, based on the current zoning. And that is, I think, and you know. Essentially what we were expecting to maybe happen with these lots, what I was anticipating perhaps with these lots, depending on, you know, what happens down the road with, you know, R2 zoning and then. But the planning board possibly is for folks to try to do like a common shared driveway, accessing a lot to back. This sort of ports and lanes like, you know, such a permit, essentially to access. It's something we've had in a couple of other instances in the city. So that is something I've been interested in on these large lots.
Thanks.
Hi, this is Medina Smith, 175 Story Avenue. So I know the sentiments around making sure that we provide recommendations on where we need to prepare, provide. Safe connection paths for folks specifically on the south end of Low Street. But I had a broader question on kind of what the big picture is for zoning on Low Street in general. Today we have a pair of proposals. One is upzoning to R1, one is upzoning to R2. If there's a broader plan to kind of, in general. In spirit, go to R2 across the Low Street quarter. I want to understand a little bit more about why is one R1 and one is R2? And what is the broader plan around land use on Low Street? Thank you.
I guess I could probably best speak to that. So I'm not, this is the zoning gap of the entire city. So the section we're looking at here is just along Low Street. I'm just going to end that briefly. So we're seeing this section of Low Street. This is Colby Farm Lane up here. So that's where the, sorry, I'm just. Now that's where the current proposal is that we're talking about. The other one we'll talk about next is down here. There's no current dialogue that, you know, there are of course various different opinions in the city depending on who you talk to, lots of important committees. There's the city council, the planning board providing recommendations, but I'm not aware of any comprehensive effort or plan to rezone the border, so to speak, of this. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's not logical to do so, and you know, give an instance, but there's nothing that's sort of comprehensively saying let's rezone, you know, Low Street in a, in a, in a, that way.
Any other comments from the public? Close public comment then and hopefully discuss.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the word by councilor in case you have any background. So we know there's a traffic study going on around, and a peer review of that going on around the. Plaza Landings, Kmart development. We know there's an effort around North Acton and Colby Farm Lane, that intersection, so makes a significant safety improvements. Are you aware of any other city-driven efforts? Specifically, I'm curious about paving a street and sidewalks plan around Low Street. Is there anything in the works or that you've been in contact with DPS on around this issue that's been highlighted on the south side of the street?
Sure, I, I'll just speak prepared if that's okay. I can usually project. So there, there isn't a comprehensive plan to look at Low Street. But there are subsections to talk about it. There was a study at the. Story Avenue and Low Street intersection to look at the volume. There was some study at the Route One and Low Street intersection going on. Remember, that's a lot of industrial, it's industrial gave a, for us into some of, you know, some of our business park area as well. There was a traffic advisory, not really a study in front of the knock going forward. It was a comprehensive study at. Colby Farm, North Acton, and that's incorporated in the safety school program that is moving forward rapidly. Forward, we hope it gets moving on it. In terms of this particular area in general, the answer is no, and it's been an evolution over time. The, when Low Street was there, people liked to park on Low Street and park similar to what we've done elsewhere in the city. Those we have in particular as well, where people would not have to pull in their driveway, they'd park on the side, et cetera, along the way. Well, as Low Street's become a little bit gentrified. And volume housing, there is a need on the south side for. Safety measures, sidewalks, et cetera, along the way. There is, and the only way that we're going to probably get that. Right? Because we still have a low volume of users down there that's starting to disparage any user down there. But in the scheme of things, as a low volume, is if we get some development down there and we make it a precursor. To getting a permit that, for example, they put in a sidewalk in front of their building and facility along their shared pathway, et cetera, along the way. And I think we can incrementally build a sidewalk along the way. Unless, of course, we can negotiate something better out of the proposals following the 40B proposal, but also the potential bingo going with across the street. Along the way to extend that along the way. So I hope I answered it. It's nothing comprehensive. It isn't, it isn't on the streets program radar, so to speak. They will do patches of them, right? You know, Colby Farm area will be redone, resurfaced. Most likely in front of the knock will be resurfaced. They keep resurfacing. Hale Street, Topps Lane, Low Street area, because. Things keep happening there, so they keep resurfacing that particular area. But other than that, I think it's a pain.
Any other comment? I, I will say that, that our role as, as the planning board tonight. Is to vote on a recommendation to the city council. That's, that's what the planning board would do. I, I hear the concerns about traffic and pedestrians, and I couldn't agree with you more. That, that, that's something that needs to be on the city's radar as we go forward. But, but our approval tonight is just related to rezoning. So you have, you have our informal support. But we can, can include that as a condition on, on a recommendation tonight. So I would, I would ask for a motion. The recommendation that we've been made to the city.
I want to make motion to the planning board, recognize there.
Second.
We five of us voted on this, and just the full members. But here, just ask for a show of hands, all of us.
So the, the next proposal is further down on Low Street, and this one, we have a similar style map to show that. This one here, we're seeing is. Is Low Street right here. This right here is the knock hole in. This is the corner right here of Hale and Low Street. And so if I just flip to the. Area photograph, which I thought a little bit easier to see where these are. These are parcels that are in question right here. So these would essentially be rezoned to residential. This came in part from conversations with property owners at the corner here who've been interested in, you know, the residential use of that property as it is today, but possibly redoing that. And it is an industrial zone, so that's not a use of allowing the industrial zone. From a land use planning perspective, it seemed to make sense that we bring forward the idea of not encouraging in the future further industrial uses with truck traffic not coming out in this area. Given that it's essentially residential in nature. And in general, the zoning map of the city, I just pan out that quickly. What you'll see is that the business park is just a giant, almost a rectangle. It's not a perfect rectangle, but you can see it's a big sort of blockish. Area of the city, but it doesn't necessarily take into account sort of the land use patterns that we have, you know, that we've seen pan out there today, and whether or not it maybe makes sense. To, to change the future of those properties before they become full-blown industrial uses. So with that in mind. The proposal here is to change from the current industrial district, just these parts here, the rest, it's still state industrial. To R1. There has been some discussion, a suggestion that possibly would make sense in a similar vein for this to become R2 as opposed to R1. But the proposal as sponsored is currently to R1. The gist of this one.
Any initial questions or comments of the board?
I would just, like you said, I was, I did bring up the issue of the R1 versus R2. When you look at, again, the idea of looking at Low Street. Oh, wild words, potent heart of area. All non-conforming, all those lots conforming. We should be R2 myself, just to make the lots not conforming. I, I really feel this is an area that we should be considering R2. Doesn't really make sense to me to be considering large lots in this area. That's just one, one. Another point is that if we're looking at. A more residential redevelopment. Hale. We've just had a meeting not too long ago about the Hale Street vice pedestrian. And it turns out that the city can't. Complete them because of the environmental conditions and infrastructure conditions between, I think, as far as. And so this is another case that somebody in the audience said in previous. Proposal that we should be, if a residential development does occur. We should be looking at making a continuous sidewalk. Southeast and Hale Street. So people can get, so bicyclists particularly, also pedestrians can get to the light. So that's, again, it's beyond what we're looking at here, just in terms of the comprehensive planning. We should be thinking about. The pedestrian environment. Essentially the south side of Dale Street. As we look at future developments. So. You know, and I guess one more thing, so we've been looking at, we've been incrementally rezoning. We, you know, we added, we should have some ways of allowing different types of uses, right, industrial uses. And we talked in the last few years about taking a comprehensive look at this. And that's creating a new transitional district. So I think that we. We should move ahead with this. But we should not have this the. We should move forward with a larger vision of the full south side of the street. All the way to such a huge size. There's a lot of complications here, and some of these just going to only.
Any other questions?
Actually, can I ask a question, Andy? Is it possible, if you support? So, is it possible to make a recommendation to rezonate R2?
No, I think it's reasonable because it's a vast change. Although it's been identified initially as an R1, I think it's reasonable in the scope of it to change to R2, while they have the, the average guy said.
I would.
Some of the council, of course, would do it directly.
I would, I would support the R2 designation as well. I think, given, given the current environment in Denver, Florida. Whenever there's an opportunity to create. Bolder lot, smaller residential, higher density residential, I think that serves the broader interests of the community. Rather than large lot, bigger single-family house. So I would support whole art, the idea of R2 sounding great in the public. With that, I guess we can open it up to public comment, if there are any comments. No comments, so we will close the public comment.
For anyone else's chance.
Still.
Oh, thank you. So Eric O'Shea again, 185 Low Street. Just more of a question, would changing to R2 or R1 in that section affect at all? I think most of the parcels are two churches. Would that change anything for them at all, or is there now industrial zone?
Those are grandfathered uses, so to speak. So they're vested, you know, if a use is where it's sold off and redeveloped in the future, I think that's breaking, getting at it, honest. We would see the potential there, not only, you know, residential development, but also the potential to look at connectivity and blockability of neighborhood configuration. There's a block set of some sort that's, you know, like a little bit used, uh, this is your, you know, but, you know, preparing with a great sidewalk connection out, so.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Jim calling 27 St. Drive as a resident, and I just want to bring to your attention, I'm in support of trying to, so this particular area as well. But I just want to bring to your attention that some of the things that I've seen as city councilors that. When we put industrial too close to residential, we have conflict. And so we got lucky with one lost and three lost places. Or we'll probably get lucky again on the Route One developed, if that continues to blow. But we have, we have a resident who lives. In, was a direct matter to the court rehab. And I think over the last five years, there have been over six hundred complaints. Because of the timing of a twenty-four hour facility versus infringing on a residential area. You know, dumpsters get emptied, and snow gets plowed at two o'clock and four o'clock in the morning, things like that, all things that are. Against our rules and regulations that we, we rectify going forward, but that have, that. Again, the number is supposed to be six hundred in terms of the complaints in the last few years going forward, and they're, they're all documented, listed, and we react to them all the time. I bring that up because, you know, what rehab is, is one for our facility right there across the bay going forward. There is a great buffer right now in terms of the property of the churches. There, where the dotted lines are, is considerable wetlands. As a matter of fact, I just had another conversation about segmentation on. A pedestrian roadway for Hale Street, and this is, this is waterway as far as concerned. If you got down there during a heavy rainstorm or anything like that, this is, this is where the road drains off to typically have. Two or three feet of water in that particular area. And so I caution us, I'd be okay with R1 in particular, especially around. The corner and around the side, and I do agree that we probably could get a contiguous sidewalk, let's say, to the intersection. But going around the corner and going down Hale Street, it may be a falling. But going around the corner and going down Hale Street, uh, it may be a falling, uh, going forward. And and if that ties us into R2, then I suggest that you stick with R1 going forward with that. Uh, but, you know, you, you're, you do your recommendation the way if you want to do it. I just, uh, I'm sharing some information based upon, uh, what it's like to kind of live in that particular area right now, uh, given that it's, uh, so close and directly above industrial. Thank you.
Any other comments? What was the public comment said? And any, any further discussion from the board?
I, I would go along recommending the change to R2 as well for some of the reasons that you stated in our previous discussion.
So entertain a motion, no personal recommendation.
I would like to, what's that? I would like to recommend in favor of these owning these parcels. And including our recommendation, consider rezoning R2.
Second.
Get your hand, all those favor.
Okay, I'm good with that. I, I think people would find one of them for a while and get this, like, this other video. Something about me, but. At a certain point, yeah.
Okay, we'll, uh, open our public hearings now. Created by the agenda is 49th and 57th, very much three. Uh, this is continued from the 21st of May. Attention. Floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Scott Brown, Low Park Detect, and here with me tonight is Nick Fracknell, our project coordinator and master of table setter and, uh, you know, hopefully our applicant owner, Renee Bernard, will be with us, uh, sometime soon. So, um, yes, last time we were before you was, uh, May 21st. Uh, we've got some feedback and some commentary from board and applicant. Since then, we've made a number of revisions and tweaks, um, to the drawings and, uh, you know, I'm walking through that and then we'll be available with some, uh, some questions. The next slide, please. So we made a number of tweaks to drawings, like including the site plan, uh, all of the elevations. And now I'm including a roof plan, uh, kind of a mini materials board. Uh, I have some of those, uh, materials with me tonight in the event that any of the members wants to touch and deal with some of that stuff that is, um, uh, we've also included updates to some of the, um, you know, perspective views and street scapes, uh, that we have seen. The next slide, please. So, uh, first up, our site, we haven't made a lot of changes to the site plan. A lot of what we've done, uh, has been about coordination between, you know, architectural, civil and, and landscape. So, uh, if you can remember, uh, we had some inconsistencies with the size of the canopy. So that's been cleaned up. Um, you know, with the architecturals and civil drawings, uh, we had some inconsistencies with the bollard locations. So that's now being shown consistent of civil landscape. Uh, we also had a couple of inconsistencies with lighting and, uh, those as well as street tea trees. And now those are, uh, consistent. Crossed for. Next slide, please. So, uh, our front elevation, the lower left-hand corner, that's the elevation, uh, from, um, you know, our, the hearing in May. Uh, we've made, uh, a few tweaks to the front elevation. Uh, just a reminder that, um, uh, you know, lighting, we did provide a, uh, you know, package showing the lighting fixtures. We haven't made any changes to the lighting in front of the building, but we did make one change in fact. Talk about slides. Uh, we do have a sheet, uh, showing all the signage on the building. Uh, as a reminder, there haven't been any changes to that since the, uh, hearing in May. Uh, entryways, we did present, um, you know, we originally, when we first were before this board in the beginning of April, we were showing one main entrance to the building and off that entrance were, uh, separate entrances to the commercial units on either side. And in May, we came to you with three sort of separate entrances. So, you know, at this time, kind of rolling forward with the assumption that there'd be two commercial units on the first floor and the entrances to those units would be to the left and right of the canopy. And so that center entrance uh, is going to be, uh, for the residential units above. Uh, in May, uh, you know, our submission drawings did have, uh, these things that I call poster boxes at the far ends of the building. Couldn't quite describe to the board what those were. And there was some question as to whether or not they, uh, were compliant with the new zoning, uh, ordinance for signage. And, uh, so we've since decided it would in fact be best to kind of remove those. So, uh, the elevation before you tonight, uh, has, you know, showing that was being removed. Uh, you know, there was also discussion about roof in May and that is perhaps not as clean as we were shown in our drawings. And in fact, that is true. So these drawings that have been submitted, um, are now showing a, a number of roof appearances, uh, including the elevator overrun, uh, which we were missing from our original submission. Uh, so we're showing that there now and, uh, also showing what the, um, solar panels, um, might look like. And, and just keep in mind, sort of, this is sort of a two-dimensional elevation. So I think in reality, from his perspective, you're not going to see any of that stuff. And I'll, you know, explain that, some of our later perspective views. So we're showing a number of things up on the roof. Uh, one, uh, perhaps subtle, but, uh, you know, what I consider sort of a big change, a big improvement in the building is on either ends of the building. Uh, those were our, where our stair floors are. And we realized that we had a little bit of an abundance of extra space at the penthouse level. And on the either end, what we've done is we've pulled in the penthouse from, you know, those side elevations. And you can sort of see the difference between the drawing in the lower left-hand corner and, and the larger drawing, which is for you this evening. Next slide, please. Uh, so side elevation, and, and this is the, you know, the first elevation, when you're going to begin to see some of the major changes that we've made to the back of the building. One of those major changes is, is a change in color, you know, which I think has dramatically improved, uh, the appearance back of the building. Uh, so on this, this elevation you're seeing at the top, uh, those roof appearances, which I was, uh, I had just mentioned, we're also introducing a metal screen in the lower left-hand corner. Kind of screen this, um, side from the parking there. Um, there is, uh, you know, a possibility that this may not be needed because we also have landscaping, um, located there as well, which will, you know, provide some additional screening. Uh, one of the big changes too, on the back of the building, we've gone from aluminum clad, uh, you know, round columns to now, uh, masonry, you know, square masonry columns, uh, you know, which will match the, you know, brick on the, on the building. Uh, also, like on the front elevations and side elevations, uh, and, you know, perhaps it's very subtle, I, you know, made some, uh, changes in terms of material notes. You know, we've been very, very specific about, uh, the type of glass that we're using. It was mentioned that, um, you know, Renal's, you know, completely showing that this, all of the glass, including the glass at the storefront is intended to be clear glass. Uh, you know, on our elevation sheet in front of the building and on the lower right-hand corner, we have a bunch of the additional sort of material specifications, including kind of outlining, you know, some of the colors that we, you know, plan to use here. Next slide, please. And, you know, back of the building, so, um, you know, there's a lot of discussion about the back of the building at the last hearing, you know, I think I might have heard over the course of two hearings, maybe the word ugly mentioned twice. And, uh, you know, we took that to heart, really made some, you know, all of the calories that we've burned since May have really been spent on the back of the building. And I think it really, um, improved the appearance of it. So, you know, the one major change, um, you know, is the color. You know, it was mentioned that, you know, the back of the building ought to be kind of maybe, you know, brick to match everything else that's around it. But brick is really not sort of like a really feasible option, you know, on the back of the building. Uh, so we just decided that, you know, um, perhaps the best thing to do is just simply change the color from what we're showing in the lower left-hand corner, gray, you know, to something that sort of blends more with, um, the adjacent buildings and what we're doing in front. Um, and this is also kind of like the same treatment of that, uh, the building on the corner of like Tidcombe and Pleasance, the back of that building has a couple of, um, yeah, additions or bump outs which are, which are wood clad that are also painted um, in a similar color to match the masonry. And, and I, I find that to be a little bit successful. So we're, we're sort of doing the same thing here, uh, except that there's more color, there's more here that is intended to sort of match the red color. Uh, so color is one major change. Uh, you know, we've changed up the window pattern. You know, in the lower left-hand corner was a little relentless, was kind of repetitive spacing. So we mixed that up a little bit. And I think that has been, uh, major improvement. Well, also these sort of balcony areas, which really aren't balconies because they're only 18 inches deep. You know, in our previous submission, there were Juliet balconies, so, you know, not a place where anyone could really sit. And what we've done in all three of those areas, we pushed that back from that facade, 18 inches to kind of create a little bit of shadow line and to break off, you know, break up the length of the building. And, uh, you know, changes to the fenestration at the penthouse level. And again, in the upper left and right corner, we pulled those ends back in. You know, that's where we had the, the additional space with those, uh, you know, stair, um, you know, stairs on either side of the building. And, uh, you know, lastly, at the bottom, again, we've eliminated those aluminum columns in lieu of kind of masonry piers, which I think is a nice, uh, a nice change. And, um, uh, you know, we did have some inconsistencies in our lighting package and some missing information. Uh, the light fixture that is on the back of the building, which is a type five light fixture, is the one light fixture that we've swapped out since the submission in May. And what we've done across the building is we made sure that the color temperatures of all these lights was as close as possible. Uh, as close as we can get them, closer to sort of like the light of an incandescent bulb. And we also realized that the lighting, uh, underneath this parking area, which is in the ceiling, ceiling was a little brighter than we wanted. So we found a fixture which has a lot less lumens, uh, than the fixture, uh, in, in, in May. Next slide, please. So we're now including, uh, a roof plan with our submission package. So I think, you know, uh, we're still trying to wrap our head around these new energy codes here in Mass and think, but not a hundred percent sure that, you know, solar is going to be a requirement, you know. So we're now showing, you know, where the solar panels are going to go. The elevator overrun, um, you know, the roof hatch. And we've provided, uh, you know, at this time, it's a little early, so we, we, we don't quite know where all of these sort of like roof penetrations and vents might go. So in lieu of identifying those locations, you know, we've provided a setback around the building to kind of tell the contractor that, you know, they need uh, to work within this sort of very defined areas. This stuff isn't visible. And also on this sheet, which has been cropped out here in the lower right-hand corner, provided a note, um, as a reminder that there are there is going to be no mechanical eating and cooling equipment allowed on the roof without you, you know, from this floor. So that's a note that we provide for, like, this sheet. Uh, next slide, please. So our materials board, so I think that this is on probably 1.2, you know, our sheet showing the side elevations, um, you know, it's the color that we're planning to, to paint the back of the building. You know, our sample of our metal cladding that we're using for the penthouse. You know, a sample of the cast stone, which we're using in a number of places, including windels, sills, the base of the building, and also what we're proposing to use, you know, for, for the window color. On upper left-hand corner, this is an example of bollard, you know, which we're planning for the front of the building. Uh, and also an example of the, uh, fence that we're now planning at the So if you can remember, there was a lot of discussion about screening in the back of the building. Uh, as a reminder, we really don't have the opportunity, the lack of space, uh, to really do any sort of landscape screening back there. Uh, so in lieu of that, we are changing, proposing sort of a fence that has more opacity uh, than what we were planning to use before. If you can remember, we kind of had kind of like a thin, kind of ironed fence, which was, you know, something that we, uh, saw the building across the street, you know. And so we've gone from that to, you know, something with some more opacity here, provides screening. It's, it's going to be a work with high uh, aluminum fence. So this is actually showing it in black. And I think that you're going to see in the, in a few moments that, um, uh, we think it ought to be, uh, more gray. And, uh, because I think the black in back of the building, uh, this fence, given its sort of opacity, is really heavy-handed, you know, I'd be a like color. Next slide, please. So just to recap of some of the things that, you know, uh, we presented in, in May, you know, we get two or four units. You know, one located on the second floor at the front, one located on the third floor at the back. You know, these are all about, and these are both about 900 square feet. Next slide, please. Signage, you know, I just mentioned signage, really no changes from our submission in May. What we've done here is kind of outline where all the signage is going to go, how it's consistent with it. Uh, you know, the light is loud by the zoning ordinance. Next slide, please. So landscaping, again, you know, really the only changes to this plan are about coordination between the, you know, architectural, civil, landscape drawings, just making sure everything's consistent in bollards, street trees, um, street lighting, those are all consistent. And also on this landscaping sheet on the upper right-hand corner, which has been, you know, brought out here. You know, we have an example of that fence that we're referencing back. You can see in previous slide. Next slide, please. So cross-sections, um, you know, not much has changed here other than just sort of updating this elevation with, you know, the edits between, made between May and now. And just, you know, subtle reminder of what the site looks like now and, and, um, that we're hoping to improve this major way. Next slide, please. Uh, site section through Tidcombe Street, looking, looking towards the east. And, uh, really, uh, no new information here. Um, you know, other than updates to our building beyond to match with, you know, we submitted last week and, uh, you know, just a comparison in terms of what this looks like, you know, today, in terms of the street view. Next slide, please. And this is, uh, you know, again, another section from Tidcombe Street. Uh, there are a couple of gray boxes on here. Uh, you know, diagrams just sort of showing kind of what might, you know, eventually happen on this site. You know, we have an empty lot that's immediately behind the building. Now, we have an empty lot that's immediately behind the building. You know, it is a lot that could be developed, so these dead boxes really showing kind of like what. Uh, you know, is allowed for zoning in buildings that's forty feet, you know, high. And also in the lower left hand corner, uh, we're doing the same thing there, building that's forty feet high and, uh, dotted box above that. Is, you know, what would be allowed, uh, through, uh, special permit, you know. Um, from this board for additional height, you know, you're allowed to go up to forty seven feet. You know, with the special permit. And that, uh, our building's at forty six, you know, what we are allowed to go to. Next slide please. So, you know, kind of an aerial view, you know, what this might look like, uh, from a property in. Pleasant Street, you notice the sign here, not the sign, but the fence in back. Has been swapped out to something with a little bit more opacity. Uh, that's, doesn't really quite render properly, but that is tended to be a great fence. Uh, you can just get a glimpse of like some of that stop up on, on the roof, not really visible. Uh, you know, and you can begin to see sort of what the elevator over on, uh, which is well beyond the base of that. Might look like, you know, uh, well beyond that base. And, um, you know, so what we're not showing in this rendering, which you can see in the lower left hand corner, there's a rather large. You know, tree, um, you know, between the dumpsters and our management, which also the bots are screening here. Next slide please. Just a few from Tidcombe Street, again, you know, um. We'll swap that fence, the back of the building's different and that little gray box there is to try to. You know, kind of maybe simulate what might eventually go there, uh, in terms of a building on that, that vacant lot. And, uh, from this vantage point, you actually don't see any of the stuff, uh, that is on, you know, that we're showing on the roof plan. Uh, you know, of our, of our building. Next slide please. And just, uh, just to close it out, oh, uh. That rendering in our lower left hand corner, that's one thing that we haven't, um. You know, updated since our original submission, I mean, there's, there's a number of things that have changed. And that, but, um, you know, we've done a lot of listening and, uh. A lot of calories really trying to sort of improve the back of the building. I think a lot of the stuff. Made now, so that's really improved this project, certainly hope that, um. You know, everyone will agree. So with that, finding that Nick doesn't have anything perfect at act. And back over the board.
Any initial question from the board?
We go back to, uh, slide nine.
You said slide. It's slide sixteen.
Slide sixteen, okay, sir.
It's one that actually lived. So I'm thinking about this, this fence, uh, so. Now my understanding that the fence is kind of continuous at the same elevation. Through those four joints around the back of the parking lot there.
Okay, yes. And there's an existing concrete retaining wall set place. You know, basically our property from the city owned property, which this fence, you know, was partially set on.
Okay, so that was my next question, which was, uh, looking at the site plan. Um, there, one section is proposed metal fence and then there's proposed metal panel fence and then there's. Proposed guardrail with metal. So the two sections that are sitting on concrete and another section is sitting on garden, there's one place where garden is awesome. Another section where they seem to be top. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so I know that there's, there was like, uh, in the upper left hand corner, it gets complicated. You know, because we're switching from one retaining wall to another, so I think that's perhaps the area that. You're talking about, it's a little mess, it's a little messy, but the intention is to have that fence be all.
Somebody, somebody's saying from J C property, see a continuous fence.
Correct, same.
And then one other thing you mentioned, uh, in your presentation, that this could be. Sure, it's been four foot, about four foot. I couldn't see any indication of plans since it's specified the height of the fence, is that? Am I missing it somewhere?
Uh, yeah, it's because we're missing, you know, so the intention is it'd be a four, four foot high fence stipulate, which is. I think really the highest fence right there were allowed per zoning here. You know, I think anything, anything above four B requires approval from this board.
I just want to make sure that you know.
Little questions? I have one question. Um, relative to the photovoltaic panels on the roof.
Yep.
Or. Seems like you're, you're not entirely sure whether they will be there or not, it's depending on the energy code? Or are you committed to installing them? Whether it's.
Well, I think this building would be a perfect use for them is buying a roof. I mean, I think that, uh, they should be up there.
It's, it's, it's a significant element to add to the presentation, so I'm just curious as to whether.
Yeah, keep in mind, these are, these only sit off the roof, one foot back. So they're fairly, they're fairly flat.
Understand.
Really, the only view that we can sort of see them, which is an elevated view. You know, is from that, you know, sort of like what we're trying to do is simulate those decks from, it's going to be the borders on, you know, on Pleasant Street.
And I understand the view part, but I guess my question is, are, are you. Including them only because you think the energy code like required them, or are you including them because there's a commitment to?
Well, what we want to do is we want to show. Want to show the stuff that, you know, I think is going to be up on the roof, the stuff that, you know, that we'd like to see.
So you want to consider the building with the photovoltaic panels?
That's fine, okay.
As we consider the building, that approval, we want us to consider it with the photovoltaic.
Correct, yes, yes. Can I clarify that? I think what Renee wants to do is have free approval for those solar panels, but they be optional if they aren't required. I'm not sure Renee wants to commit to putting them on the building. But if they are required by the code, they'll be on the building. If they're not, they want, they want, he wants them to be option for him.
Yeah, I think we can open up the, the public comment.
Hey, um, my name is Sarah Tapp, and I'm, um. Nearby, I'm living in Tidcombe Street. Um, I appreciate the changes to the back, I think they're improvement, color being closer to brick is better than the gray. I still think actual brick would be better and more in keeping with the store manager. I heard the comment that it's not feasible, I, I don't know why. Um, I think the color and lighting materials from the penthouse are a concern, um, and don't match the neighborhood. Um, I have a question, I guess, about the height variance because I haven't seen any justification for it in any of the comments. My understanding is that, reading these things, that, um, the mass law says that. We can't approve the variance unless it's, there's some hardship that's being, um, met.
I could, I could speak to that, yeah, just to clarify, this isn't a, it's a fair question, it's only a special permit, which doesn't have the harsh requirement. It does require the district area review by the board, uh, you know, just to determine it's not a definite neighborhood, but it's not, uh, actually required the hardship about.
Um, and then the rooftop elements that go above, the, the pipe. Should have some kind of screen from what I read, and I don't see that. And then finally, um, in the parking area. The, um, the code said there should be two shade trees for every ten parking spaces and I don't see those. So those are the comments that I consider.
Any other comment? Close public comment then and, uh, open it up for a second.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's the site.
Any other questions about it? I have a couple of. One more minor than others. Uh, relative to the address of the building. And this is kind of a diversion, but, but my assumption is that. Uh. When this building is built, the address on the building to forty nine to fifty seven Merrimack Street, then you will. Pick a number and agree with the fire department as to what the address of the building is, it will be one hundred related to that. So, so I understand why you're designating it the way you are right now, but. But I assume the reality is going forward that the building will have just one number. Relative to the front elevation and. The address, um, we've got large, uh. Numbers and letters designating the address in actually two different locations, one at the top of the building. And one at the marquee. And I, I wonder if you'd be willing to consider just one location that they need a marquee, but. I wonder if you'd be willing to consider that, because it, it, I'm not, I'm not sure why you needed it to.
We're kind of making the Bernard building.
I, I think that there could be another.
Master's long now.
Or the, the top of the building, that's not the building in your, or.
Yeah.
Think, think about that.
Yeah. Or the year he started planning it at the top.
Yeah.
Um. So a couple of other items, in, in terms of the roof plan, um. I understand what you're saying, uh, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I think one of our conditions of approval would be that. We are approving the building with what is shown on the roof plan right now. Uh, and, and some of that is covered by a note, and I'm fine with that. Uh, but we, we will limit it to what you're showing right now. Anything else that is proposed, uh, you would have to come back for.
Yeah, you're good. It's that specification in this part. Yeah.
Couple of items that, that we have talked about several times and maybe we're not communicating clearly on it, but. I think given, given the request for a special permit for, uh, height. Relative to the building, I think. You need to show a couple of three dimensional diagrams, which, which I think we've talked about. Uh, and we can talk about it further offline, but, but. That, that indicate the difference between what is allowable by zoning right now. Uh, and, and what you were proposing. And I, I know you showed it at elevation. Uh, with the gray blocks that are on the elevation, I'm not sure that great gets to the level of information we're looking for. I'm not going to hold up any discussions about, uh, you know, motions tonight relative to that. But I, I would like to see more comprehensive diagrams that support your request. For the height, it's, I, I don't think it's complicated, I think it's just showing more clearly, uh, the. The level of information that, that you're talking about. Um, in terms of materials. Uh, we, we've talked about materials board. Um, seeing the actual materials, I appreciate the digital presentation, but, uh. We need to see real materials, real colors, and I know you brought them with you, but you, you gotta. You gotta put them in a material board, and I know you know what that means. Um, you're missing a couple of. Although you've mentioned the windows, you haven't really been specific about the storefront system. So the aluminum storefront, I assume the color is the same as the windows, but you just need to say that. Um, the, the guardrails, the painted decorative metal guardrails that balconies. Um, you just need to be clear about what that paint color is again. And I'm not trying to be a pain in the leg about this, it's just, it's just the information that's required to document what you're proposing. Uh. And the fence, I think you, you've talked about the painting, the paint color, but if you could be specific about that as well. Um. There's a couple of issues, um, there's, there's been discussion about, uh, impacts to a butter. Andy, I think you can speak to this in a little bit more detail, but we, we will make it a condition. Uh, of, of approval that. As part of your construction management plan. There is outreach to a butter, there is a survey of existing conditions. There is monitoring of vibration at your property line. Uh, and that any further mitigation or, or measures to be taken. Uh, will be discussed between you and the individual property. We're not experts on, on what the requirements are for that, but we would like that discussion to take place. So we're asking you to. Reach out to a butter, uh, to establish existing conditions and to monitor the, um, the vibration and impact. Structure at your property at a minimum. Uh, and hope that there are other discussions between the proponents and the butters, so that anything additional like. So that's one thing, uh. Oh, the, it was a clarification of retail. Uh, definition, we want to make sure that, that that definition is broad enough that it encompasses. Everything that you might anticipate in terms of use with the ground force. That's not limited to just the definition of retail.
If I could speak to that, but yeah, we just wanted to make sure, I think, and we even, in your own interest, I think is what you could talk about with us, but. You don't necessarily want to limit yourself to only what we consider retail space, right? It might be an office use zone, right? So, um, where it's a mixed use building, I just want to make it clear in the written decision that we're not only improving retail or. Uses the things like, um, however, of course, if it was a restaurant or something and required for parking, that's a different situation. Back, but our typical parking, but otherwise, uh, it's not limited to just the traditional.
I just want to get back to the landscaping question, Chris. Um. So the, the. So this is kind of unusual situation, um, the ordinance does say that surface parking, more than twenty spaces. That what, this one, this one shade tree for ten parking spaces, each is a piece of a minimum of two and a half inches. Uh, looking at the landscaping plan, I can see, it's a, you know. A, a European beach, uh, in the southern east corner. So the, the, the trees have to be within ten feet of the park. That European beach would certainly walk off. And that, but this is kind of an unusual situation where. I guess it's questionable. A, uh, judgment call, so it might not should be. So it might not should be what we normally think of as a surface park, fourteen market space. But by not to say this, it's just an unusual. You got one, we have one shade tree.
Yeah, there are other, there are.
The surface, we do call service space a shade tree?
Those two are surface areas, the two that are on the right.
Uh there's one on the right.
Looking at the two at the right, I can't see what they are, but there are two on the right, one in the corner next to the police station and one next to the nine spaces.
One, yeah, one next to the police station, the lower right is the uh. Red dust area of the beach.
Okay, the one right there in the lower right is the beach. Okay, what's the one, there's a street tree there, there's a tree there, I don't know what it says yet.
Yeah, you have that's the European beach.
Okay, so there are two in that bottom corner, two, two trees. Is it a? And that, that's, yeah.
I don't know whether, yeah, it's fine. I'm not trying to argue the point, I just know what your surface bearing would kind of the shade tree. But if it does, then either three.
Well, I would say it doesn't, well, what's in there, it will, and that's something people are interested.
I guess, I mean, I'm also saying, I'm not sure that there's all, all the spark mistakes.
Understood.
So I guess the question is, do you feel this is good enough last thing?
My recollection was the last time, this was a quick conversation about the landscaping, the trees here. I think Nick was the one who used to put the presentation, but because the three trees that are playing here are based in proportion to. Plus, we're talking about individual trees and whether that would be considered an issue, you know, canopy versus. I mean, uh I think that was the, our understanding is that those three trees want to re, reset it.
So I mean, I think we're close. And the only other thing I would say is that the ordinance requires two and a half inch cap for control. These are specified as two to two and a half.
Yeah, perhaps the red decision, we can just make it explicit. To happen, yeah.
Yeah. Any other question?
Do we, do we need to notice in the that? That I think this is a question, that there is a recommendation about. I think about the um licenses or.
Yeah, there's special condition about going to the city council.
And I was wondering whether that's also needed for the.
Uh I don't think that we're gonna see an issue with the baller there. Uh I, I do think the canopy deserves that though. I, I, I don't think, frankly, I don't think it's a problem, but it could be beneficial clarity just to include both in the request. Um but in, in the case of, for instance, there's a light fixture installed in a, for two to six Merrimack or Market Street um right in the sidewalk or part of that side of it there, that wasn't preferred to an ease with the city council brand there. But the move over to um something that was a concern. So I, I don't feel the need to, or you can probably do that in there. I think it's the overhand issue.
I guess my question, the screen light is kind of becomes essentially says it's possible. They're gonna be.
No.
Well, these are, they were, they were originally.
Maybe, yeah, they were originally.
So they're just.
Yeah, I think that would be an issue.
What's, what's the purpose of all of it?
I, yeah.
Buy some protection and better delineate the canopy.
So it has to be.
I take no. So.
So the canopy now, that's, it's consistently extending across.
Well, set back after, but it's still because it's going over the right way. This is actually what we treated or the same we give them to say Merrimack, uh Market Street where the city council would need to approve it just because it's an extended structure.
Well, if I look at, if I look at um landscape plan L twenty zero, which is dated.
Oh, yeah.
July ninth. It, it looks like the canopy is going all the way to the curb.
Yeah, this is the most recent landscape that we have. Zen, if I'm mistaken, this is actually still showing old. Where you can put an explosive condition maybe. It's the other, I know the other drawing you, you already said.
Yeah, the southern side. Last thing I could match the symbol.
I didn't think we were showing the canopy in the landscape.
And you're showing the wall also.
All the walls, yeah.
But they're, but they're in the curb, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, there's, there's so much heavy line. I, I could certainly tell you, even absent the special condition, having back about it, it's worth it. But you know, this is, we're, we're, we're to agree with that this plan is a day here.
So which is.
This one here that shows an attachment that will back the, the civil, no, not this, this, the, yeah, so not the landscaper language. Sorry, I'm sorry. It's the same after I shows correctly back. Uh so the one that consists of drawing.
So, um. Can we summarize condition?
The, the canopy is not on the landscape.
I was saying a second ago.
I guess, I guess what's happening is the brickwork, yeah, looks like it's not.
It looks like a kind of, I think it's the same way. Yep.
What I'd like to do is summarize conditions. If we get to um. So that you understand uh context of move or. And what, what I.
Yeah.
And the construction management plan E. Uh and pressing a button. E, I can have move plan. What's allowed, there's a lot shown on the plan. Uh. With apologies, I have sufficient unproven material uh for final review. Um. Height and mass and diagram to support this second component.
And for a question on the materials board, given the visual sufficient here, I have a couple samples here. Uh is that something that's been in return of the board prior to present a submission here prior to construction? Or is it just be given that there's a representation of it here as just sufficient for the office to have a.
Fire. Final submission of material board prior to construction or for review.
For a few. Okay.
And the last one I have is the.
Right. Um we also did, we had in addition, had um. Sorry, just, we had a two point five inch tall tree, I mentioned, just to make it clear. Actual uh clarification of work with that's well, where. And um the uh generic sort of special conditions that the office recommended based on the nature of the project. It's a pretty simple, but um the place that exists in sidewalk, this is sort of, sort of condition. Um sidewalk, it's tree trees, that's, that's standard, the new single floor, of course. The, uh as you mentioned earlier, the construction management plan, which is also very addressed with like the sidewalk holders and uh activity during construction, um fraction of Stevens' investment for operations. Right. Um. Uh. Yeah, uh just um you, as you mentioned earlier, the uh there's a, the, the condition we put in staff. They clarify where those um. And then uh from the uh occupancy department itself, at least, we give a little bit of time during construction, but the ease would go into the city council. Uh for that. So that's something that we give those reasons to Market Street. Uh it goes to ground four, four local plan. And uh yeah, um I, did you know there was a special condition needed for that? Because I, it wasn't prepared, I guess, that it could be needed here, believe that I think it was the way we sort of described the applicant, that it's a danger unless we stop, and you install it as, as the drawings are going. So I, I think that's how we can turn the door, it's not a special condition unless there's a, I'm sorry, I'm an issue.
Shouldn't we say something about it? I mean, you should have said one way or the other, we should either say these were required. College and teams. It seems like it's otherwise, it's, there's some.
Yes. It's perfect, if, if you feel the need to put that in there, and I don't feel that's necessary here, only in the sense that they have. I, I don't think that they would be precluded from building their building without the solar panels. From being a bigger, super emphasis in the plan, simply because they did not install a solar panel, which is drawn. So if you feel the need, if you want to put something in there, declare it. I don't feel that that's necessary, because I don't think they'd be held up. But they, we wouldn't hold them in violation of their plans because it is also.
I guess my concern is, but I, it's fine with the solar panels. But what if they, you know, not say they. Didn't put something. How you like to say one or the other, you're allowing it or?
So how I get in.
I think we should say that.
Sorry. Uh I just thought the last one that we had was just the uh.
Yes.
Yeah.
One more. Terms of the sidewalk. Um there's an unusual situation you're in. Turning the bricks ninety degrees, that doesn't exist in. I think you.
I think you take that out at the sidewalks.
Yes.
We don't, I don't know where that came. You brought it up.
Cause I thought it was a canopy, right?
We were testing you.
So, so uh. But I don't think we need to.
If, if we feel the need, I don't, we're, we're, we're stimulated just to be a bit different to all the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My God, somebody.
Get to an atmosphere.
Andy, do we need to review the findings? What findings?
Uh we should just note in the record, uh I think that we've made the findings. I don't think they need to be verbatim, but I think that just to note the substance. Or creating, you know, because there are several issues here, unfortunately. Uh just for the record.
Are we going to, are we going to um? It's a previous, a previous meeting, sometime last year, we started a process. And for a complicated decision, having the decision. Are we gonna do that?
Yeah, so generically speaking, when it's simple, when it doesn't. You know, it's a process of it, like if there's language or more detailed, it certainly come back. I think in this case, it's pointed out what the conditions are. Uh if it was a situation like that, you think you'd want to accept a decision back to review, but I think everything here is cleared out. I would need all the people.
No, we do have.
Right, yeah, so again, with, with the chair, we typically we go through when we make sure that everything with the seventh meeting is. Is on the working, we're verbatim. Here.
Oh, um in terms of motion. Um. First, we got site plan approval, which is not a special permit. Uh I'm gonna ask for the five full court members only to vote on that. Uh we will ask for our associate members to vote on the special permit. Uh and I see no reason, unless there's an objection, I see no reason to grouping all of the special permit. It's together under one motion.
That was gonna be my question, but it'd be to do them separately.
Much more efficient if you have it together. And I think it's always just a note.
You know, a lot of things like a particular issue about that someone will be separated them.
So I think we should go to the special permits first.
Okay, well, I will entertain a motion relative to special permit. That would be the downtown overlay district special permit. Use special permit, special permit, height uh and ITI.
I would move that we approve the um the DOD special permit, special permit for mixed use, special permit for IT and ITI, special permits in twelve forty-nine to seven Merrimack Street with the incorporation of the draft findings, discussion commission, conditions which we enumerated here. Second.
All is in favor? So. Motion relative to certain.
I move with the second review application. Can go.
Okay. All in favor? I'm.
A little, little work. I just might come. I just want to thank everybody for running a really great process. I think the staff that fantastic to work with, all of you. I think it's clear from the presentation and thoughtful stipulations or special conditions you put on this project. It's really benefited. Having a really moment deliberative collaborative process, we spent a lot of time working with staff, buying board members, a butters, listening to public comment, working with the store commission, working with. I just want to say, I think you've done a really great job making this project better. This design has benefited tremendously from going through this process. We thought it was pretty good to begin with, it's a lot better. So um again, thanks, thanks again for everything you've done to make this a great project for hopefully downtown Newbury. Thank you.
I would reiterate and say all the same, but I would also thank the applicant and hope that the applicant moves right very quickly in helping this section of Merrimack Street to uh to be completed so this piece, so thank you.
Yeah, I, I would reiterate that it's been a very, very good process. There's been a lot of dialogue back and forth. This is, this is a terrific project for us. But I think we all want to see this go forward, it's possibly possible, so I, I think this, this will be great. So we got a little bit more work to do, but I think we're, we're just basically, I think very much for your, your participation. Well, the other item on our public hearing agenda is one ninety five street. Um. And a request to withdraw the special permit.
Right, yeah, there is a request for a permit amendment, uh P S P twenty-five ten, they've requested all. We're, during speaking, the board typically make a motion to.
And.
Sorry. Uh I mean, typically speaking, we recommend members refuse themselves.
But I.
Uh this is just withdrawal, yeah, we're here to try and public be free, it's just, they tried an action to approve. It's not, the proving is what's. So.
Okay.
You are going. Yeah, you want to. It would make sense.
Yeah. You got to see you. I need a motion to.
I'll move to withdraw the special permit amendment for one ninety five street for that.
Um, could we, should we make this?
Yeah, actually, just to clarify, because we didn't see it uploaded at the, when I was talking with the office staff earlier today, we didn't assume typically you see it as a left right attachment at this point. It's the last attachment because it wasn't posted there. Just I think it's maybe worth noting for the record that that is based on. Our, I'm saying the office, we received a D and written request for the withdrawal, unfortunately just wasn't uploaded for the board members to see this evening. So let's put that understanding that there was a written request for that. Withdraw on.
So when we could make just a tender motion to say. Based on.
Based upon the written request of the applicant, yeah.
Yeah. It's based on. Written request on, yeah.
Apologies that that didn't make its way out there when we last voted there today. I didn't expect to be out there. So. Not panicked, we had to consider it. We did proceed to just.
So we'll go back there.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. And actually, one of the things I check on as well, what he's just like, you know, where is it that is there's some reason to make up. I'm sure that's just a fraction. Well, it's there.
So can we amend the motion?
Well, we just did.
So then it is.
So all those in favor.
Seconded it. I just don't know who seconded it, so I can write it. Thank you.
That closes our public hearing. Evening. Uh, we'll move on to general business. Turnpike redevelopment. One sixty six, one sixty eight. Minor modification.
You ready for me?
Ready.
Great. Thanks everyone for your time and serving on board and all your hard work. Um, my name is Alex Loth. I work with MCO Development. I'm. Project manager of this project. Forward. So here tonight to walk through the various changes that have happened to this project since it was approved sometime ago. As we went through all of the required engineering work. To fully flesh out and come to a set of construction drawings, be able to report on this project. There's always some changes here and there that come up. Uh, so we wanted to go through those and we'll get your approval tonight and answer any questions you have related to those. Those changes. Uh, so I'm here tonight representing the developer. It's to have with me Scott Cameron, Principal of Mormon, uh, Warren Cameron Group. Dan Severs with the Warren Cameron Group, and Joe Lucicello from Halverson. Uh, Bob Ullrich has worked on this project along with Joe, was not able to be with us here tonight. I'm sure he's very sad about that. So thank you, Andy, for bringing this up.
We know if there's something different, there are a couple of attachments. I think I didn't assume that this is maybe what you want to do. We know there's.
Yeah, it's a different PDF that has three pictures and whatnot as well. I don't know unless the very beginning of it. Saying until.
Sorry, do you want?
No, if you can start at the beginning, that's fine. That's what you're, I don't want to begin. No, you're missing a beautiful rendering. Which is okay. And we're starting to.
That's why we're right. We uh, we have your. Lancy of lands. We have the.
And this is Andy's fault. I did send this fairly late.
Uh, did you, was it uploaded?
It's the thing I put into Dropbox because we go too big.
Oh. Maybe that. So it's. How much are we going to pull that up right now? If I take a second to grab.
If it is possible, I hate to.
So it's slowly. That still needs to be uploaded to open go then because it's not.
Right, it's not. Unless.
Uh, just there, you know, from future suggestion, uh, typically speaking, we recommend that those be uh. Loaded to the record. We have that part of it. Once making the vote. So that's the.
Sure, I appreciate that. And actually, the only, it's really just putting it in a different order. The only thing in there that's new is. So we're not. Um, that all the documents same, and if it's going to take too long to hear, it's really.
Going to make a note though, in the future, we will not be doing that. Taking uh.
Understood.
We will not be doing this way forward, uh, because it's not a good way to run meetings as the labor makes me download the last. Worth.
I'm starting on. If I can start by talking about where some of the various changes came from. Some of the things you'll, you'll see are typical construction changes as we get, as we get through details and whatnot. Um, but there are some more substantive things as well. We met with the parks commission sometime ago. Um, to. Looking at. Some additional park spaces. Uh, and so that's probably the biggest change here you see to this site plan is. Um, as the owners of this site for years, one sixty six, one sixty eight site, we know that people use the property. City rail trail. Um, and that's fine. I mean, we've been doing that for years. We've, the Clipper City Rail Trail is a great. It's a great amenity for our projects and for the entire city. And our initial plan that you all approved had a few parking spaces on our site to access that rail trail. Um, and what we're doing now is, and has been approved by the Parks Commission, is creating parking spaces on the rail trail land adjacent to our site. So we're creating a lot more. What that does is allow, it's actually seventeen parking spaces. And so that allows people to want to come and use the rail trails to have a place to park, to do that. To walk up and down, ride up and down. And we see people with strollers, et cetera, et cetera. Lot more parking spaces for that. Rail trail. Uh, and then it also allows people to use um, the retail spaces there as well, that commercial building that we're creating. And hopefully really activates this whole plaza because that was one of the big ideas, not only providing housing which we really needed, but we've got this great interconnection between. Creating here and the rail trail and retail plaza there. So people can really come up here and use this, continue to kind of invigorate this whole transit and part of the city. Uh, so those are the changes you'll see. Andy, thank you very much. Sorry for delaying you guys. I really appreciate bringing it up because it helps my tiny little brain if it's in you.
Next, next time this happens though, we all have to. Not going to do this, you know.
Right, and if that were the case, we're certainly just calling the plans as uploaded to the documents because this is the only thing you're seeing is to bring. It's just, I love to start with a pretty picture because Ben and Brendan are developing developments. So that was the, the previous image was looking at the development um, from up in the air, from Parker Street side and taking a look at that buildings coming by. These are a couple of images just in case anyone isn't oriented to this development. These are actually from the initial um, submission, which is oriented to where this is. Um, you all in here, you're very familiar with the city, so you know where this site is. It's on sixty six, one sixty eight Route Ones, where the Haley's Ice Cream was, and uh. And a commercial building as well. Haley's Ice Cream Center is now gone. Uh, the building is now gone. The other commercial building is still there. And you're going to next slide, please, indeed. And just zooming in, you can see our side in red, and you can see where one and three Boston Way are on the other side of Parker Street. And then the next slide. And again, zooming in and then outlining the site, you can see in the site there. And we're going to line along Route One there. You can go ahead. Existing buildings, you can go ahead. You've seen what that looks like. Another example. Uh, this is the old site plan, very few changes, but just again, it shows you the building. I thought it was a bit of a, it shows you the building within the context of the uh, portions. Go up there. Um, we can. Yeah, we can skip these. So this is, uh, and Scott will talk to these. Scott will be more careful to talk through the specifics. Um, so what else is to be, just very quick, I'm going to talk about return over to Scott. And then over to the landscaping team. Um, so there are the change, we're going to go through the changes that were probably. I um, go through those parking spaces. Um, Parks Commission land, there was actually a physical change to our. It's driven by mass DOT changing there, ownership of Route One. So there's a bit of information there. There's a couple of small uh, framing utility changes. Uh, some small hard cave and planting changes, and then I'll talk. Technical changes.
We don't, we don't, we don't, if you want this here, if you want to go.
Yeah, if you can go, if you're beginning with civil lands, that's probably a good spot, and I'll let Scott take it from here. He can go through his D C C may well be on a different. Recent civil lands.
Then we named. Charles back in Scott Cameron, Warren Cameron Group. Six six hundred and thirty in there in Massachusetts. Um, good to see everybody again. Um, Andy, I can probably talk in the color of plan that shows the whole site if you want to just keep uh. It actually seems like the easier one to. Yeah. My plans are. Very good to build from, but not so kind of on the eyes and feelings. Um. So I'm going to go through this kind of point by point, the civil uh, engineering related aspects of this. Uh, I was trying to cover kind of the points wide. Um, but I want to make sure you're aware of the changes that were made to the plans from what you approved previously. Um, sorry, but the mass DOT uh, changes the. The project is going to include a preconstruction in addition of a new sidewalk and kind of greenway along the front end of the site. Uh, initial plans had pieces of sidewalk on the land and pieces of the sidewalk with the mass DOT layout. That's DOT uh. Would like all the sidewalk on their layout, so it has part of the permitting process for that DOT. Uh, they did a taking, actually, of the land. Uh, and that changed the configuration of that frontage line. A little less land, it doesn't impact the density or the zoning calculations, uh, which we made sure to check before that went through. Uh, but that did impact the frontage of the site a little bit. Um, the prior design, while we're here and zoomed in, there.
Yeah.
Uh. On the very northern end parking, we used to have a transformer uh, location at that spot. Now that we're through more of a detailed electrical side. That transformer has been relocated to sell it into the building, kind of tucked up in an area. Uh, where it's kind of out of the way, we can screen it and make it, make it out of the way. Uh, this would be the plan, right? So the transformer was relocated. Uh, this has to do with the length between the power supply and the transformer. Uh, we, they, we couldn't bring the power all the way to that end of the site, so it had to be closer to Parker Street. Um, as far as this too, we're also limiting some utility poles. Uh, there's an agreement in place to reduce the utility poles a lot of one. On the front of the building because those poles at this point in time only provide power to the property across the street. So they're going to maintain that, but they're going to draw that underground along the front of the site. And then come back over on a pole and go back out. So in front of the building, those poles are going to disappear. Um. We did do quite a bit of utility work. That's where most of my world exists. We're doing construction documents. Um. I don't know if you recall, but uh, MECO for the development, one and three Boston Way, oh, already reconstructed a large portion of the municipal drainage system. That feeds kind of this whole neighborhood down through uh, Boston Way and out to the weapon system downstream of this little river. Um, this project was going to be the final piece of that, which included uh, in replacing a very, very old stone over, which was built when they built the original railroad. Uh, at this point in time, we have not had a lot of success in finding that and locating it. Um, newer technologies, we started this in twenty thirteen. Way back in the day. Um, we, we use graphic imagery and radar study, tied it into our survey, uh, a lot of accuracy. We did actually find this culprit. We know exactly where it is. We also identified the location of all the utilities on Parker Street where this property would connect into. Uh, and that prompted us to be able to more finely engineer on utility systems, your water, sewer, stormwater. Um, and all that work is now on the plan. So that focus is going to do that on, on your behalf from the technical side. And we'll be sitting down with the city engineer DPW shortly to go through that as well. Um. In the northernly parking area, uh, that increased from twenty parking spaces to thirty six. Uh, there are seventeen parking spaces uh, located within the rail trail quarter. So it's on the rail trail land. We met with the Parks Commission. Uh, they did approve that unanimously, uh, unanimously, they were not. Uh, those spaces are all going to be public spaces. Uh, in that area. And the expansion here uh, is to really revitalize, make this amenity building in that connection to the rail trail more vibrant. So it's not just a. Three or four month seasonal thing when people are walking the trail. We're hoping this allows people to come in year round. Since we got more vibrant business and use that many building and we're vibrant activation, real travel. Uh, the Parks Commission was very important for stuff because they. They tried to tend to say anything a lot of this work. Uh, so it's good to make their feedback and support us. Um, obviously the private spaces as well. What this also does is we, we initially had the public parking spaces on the south end of the site on Parker Street. So we're going to be doing a little bit of a logistical, like we are trying to direct people to Parker Street to access the rail trail and walk the north end of the building into the amenity building. And through this change, we actually consolidated all the public parking at the north end. So that's where both quotes will go. And then parking in the south side will be for the tenants only. So it clarifies that's not the parking enforcement issues in private property. And if folks will get to know where to go for public parking. Um, so along the frontage, uh, the original design had a little bit more of a. Uh, reverse curb driveway in ninety degree spaces. We kind of had space on one side and then we flipped in the other. It works. You can identify rapraps in there, uh, but it wasn't super efficient because you have cars backing out. You get a very long stretch of road and, and there wasn't a whole lot of room for landscaping. So what we did is we consolidated footprint pavement, switched this to parallel parking spaces. And we also redid some of the um, parking kind of in and around the building, little adjustments, rearranged the, the solid waste uh, dumpster area. That's for accessible for the pickup trucks. And uh, we now have more of a, like a parallel parking space, normalized street skate coming in. We'll be able to get trees on either side. Uh, we did also include an island in the middle of that, so it breaks up the uh, the light pavement. And um, uh, that will be raised actually. So it's a little bit of a traffic calming measure as well. You see where it puts the cross hatching. Uh, cross that. So that's, we're going to do a soft kind of like hump there to just deter people from. Speeding over here. But we thought with the parallel. Cars on the other side, it's going to, it's going to kind of self mitigate any, any, any speed through that, that stretch and. Um, and we think the aesthetic improvements which we'll talk about are significant as well. Uh, in the garage, we don't show one here, but there were four compact spaces in the garage. We increased those to standard sized spaces. And overall, um, there's two additional private parking spaces and then we're up to seventeen public parking spaces from, I believe it's four conversion. So quite a big change in public benefit there. Um, and I believe there will be reciprocal easements and things for that whole area.
We might continue this. We had some dialogue about this. Well, they're not, you know, there's always situations that don't aren't accounted for by your appropriate regulations and. The typical situations you think of. And so this is an unusual situation which actually benefits, you know, all the rail trail. And the activity we're trying to create, the that patient who is used, which is only going to come up with the courtyard already, trying to make sure that you do have true, you know, best use and true by uses. So for Mingo to be able to make a good buy and use that space, part of that, you know, destination using rail trail. Seem to be sort of beneficial across the four year. Obviously, this is Scott mentioned. Uh, this is not private. These spaces are not being created, you know, or this virtually used. They're being big territory for the general public, but they will also have to answer better than being those parts of the, you know, like those for coming there. Um, you know, to go to that location. But um, to Scott's point, we can discuss because of course they're filled on. These, but there's no way to get them without going across. In the, the outflow, wider for some reason, the cities of the residents who never use. Don't do those spaces that are being created on public land, both our public, obviously they utilize, you know, like the parking there. Uh, but to make sure that there's an actual right ability to get to those spaces. So that's kind of the dialogue we have. The point in resolving this park situation here.
Just clarification. So, so spaces that are. On the city property. Spaces. In the same lot of students, the spaces that are not on the city property.
Yeah.
I was seconding that. Tell, tell you for example. For them. People who are. Living in the building. Spending all the time.
I also can certainly speak to that too if I don't get this right, but the good thing about this is they already had experience managing this at a trans station at one of the three Boston way where there continues to be young people trying to park there and then use the trans station or use rail trail. This combination of parking bases being assigned, so the number, signage, and then where necessary enforcement.
But the private spaces are really ancillary to your. Small building.
Yeah, we're hoping they're filled by, you know, during the day, it's, it's, this is how it's used by agents of the, of the, of the. The, the tenant there. The resident parking.
Meaning, I think the understanding of the park structure. Play that here. So the, um, the sign is going into a short term. Brand proposed parking there. I think maybe this is really the park permission that maybe you want to like adjust over time, but. They were going to put um, uh, restriction there. They're going to put a blue logo from truck park.
So the parking enforcement should be getting everything.
Well, again, it's a valid question, you know. So I mean, I think the project reality is we're assuming here that the landowner who's operating on a regular basis is going to be huge or not, but. It's a valid question. And then, you know, there could be a discussion at some point at which, you know, does the, the, does the parking clerk, you know, take down their, you know, what's wrong with vehicles, checking to see what's wrong there. Um, it's a practical question. It's a practical question, but yeah, it was deserved.
That little period as a line, sort of used over the first years. Sticking it or towing last time they do it. Being one who rarely gets to take his spot. On sites kind of designing. So I think, you know, for the rest of this, we did update all the stormwater management. Hopefully there were some changes and we were putting the base area, but most part it's pretty darn close to what you originally proved. Stormwater systems are pretty darn close to what you originally proved. Focus and did review all that and, and signed off on it. He did ask that we, you know, what you will see is a full plan set, we only gave you the pieces that showed what was changing. We're gonna have a full building permit plan set, we're happy to have the board, so you can find a part of that sort of things together. And I can either turn this over to Joe and Lynn, say here, if you have any questions, you're gonna sit and sharing aspects of it. Oh, the one, one big one, not so big, but. We did raise inflation of building twelve inches. From a zoning calculation, we did not change height, because it's measured from the finished grade. But what this did is it, and I don't think, honestly, I don't think you're gonna notice what would change from any of you who are on the property. But what this did allow us to do was to, a little balance, a little bit better, we're still gonna have an export of soil from this project. We're excavating the basement and there's really nowhere else to put it, because we're matching grade at all sides. But we were able to reduce the export by about a third, which is significant, so that's less truck saving the site, it's less soil we have to find home for at another location. And obviously, the, the, the less we can impact soil in that nuisance issue from the time of construction, we just felt it was the appropriate thing to do. The trade off for that was, we do have longer walkways in, in getting from the buildings, we had to maintain our. Sloes for the sidewalks, and sorry, I keep looking this way, because you're more in front of me, but not in my eyes. The young engineer who gets across me in team meetings is always the one I think. So we don't. The twelve inches, it helps a little bit with the, with the gravity, utilities going on Parker Street, do however, we're pushing our minimum social strata pipes, we get a little bit of. So open pipes, it just lets everything breathe a little bit easier in a lot of different aspects. And, you know, while you will definitely see some differences on here, we don't, I didn't feel making this recommendation pushing to this. Made a substantial change from the spirit of intent of the original design. But I certainly appreciate any, any feedback you can have on that. But I think that's, that's what I have to say.
I just had a question about the historical aspect. Where is that ancient culvert on the property, if that you're asking?
If you pull up the utility plan. So you'll find these in pretty much all the railways, we're doing another project with Minko in, in Andover. Because a railroad and we're talking to the same situation, it's the same. They used to build on field stone, but they just loose laid like a wall, like the epic with blue stone. And then there's, there's granite slabs across, spread curves that they placed across. This was the standard of construction back in the day, and it's very simple, obviously they're still there. I'm trying to pick a good area. Probably happens somewhere, but it goes, if you're standing on the site driveway on Parker Street, if you look to your left, there's a, there's a hole, drops down. If you go in there, poison ivy and all sorts of stuff in there, you'll see the head wall from this culvert. We can't get into it, because some of the stones have fallen, can't get camera equipment in, you can see, and I've probably enough to see like ten or so feet, and I can see where it's going. There it is, so. You can kind of see it, it's light gray, right there, yep, that's the one. And so it goes across the street, and then when they develop the MBTA lot. Or Parker Street, at some point in time, somebody stuck a fifteen inch metal pipe on the end of it and called it a day. That went into the MBTA lot. From there, it hooked into a concrete pipe and that took it around. We knew it distracted somewhere, because of things draining. We couldn't find it, and when we were doing one Boston Way, we eventually found this thing out in the middle of a frac pipe swamp, nowhere near the site. And it was fifteen, fifteen inches of like organic frac mighties above this pipe. So we kept that thing, it's still serving as an overflow, we kind of poked it out and figured it out, but now everything runs from brand new. Thirty-six inch corrugated plastic pipe HTP, and goes to a treatment system before it goes up the well. So we're managing all the water from the neighborhood, that was all on one boss, and you can see the manholes kept going up, following up the pipe. So all that stuff's in place, we're gonna, we're gonna finish that. That's a pretty big one. It's kind of a cool, if you guys want any stones from the old culvert.
So this, that culvert that picks up. Essentially is a stream. What is happening to that stream? Sometimes it's stream, sometimes it's just.
It's, it's, yeah, it runs right around, it goes right on the front edge, up around Hill Street, and then it goes underground again.
Now I'm thinking about the one, the ditch that is between the rail trail.
Oh, so the original design, we, we were filling all that in and leveling it, and there's going to be along that entire lot line, there's gonna be a perforated drainage pipe that's gonna. Function basically what that was doing, it's not receiving much runoff at all. So we're leveling it up, making it more useful, and there's a French tree basically between the properties all the way down. And there's all, and there's all landscape yard greens, a way to pick up water, so. Yeah, mosquitoes, it, it, actually, it's not too bad in this stretch, once you go a little further north, there's depression, there's water is across from. You know, Dave Hall's project, so a lot of it there, but. That'll be nice, a nice usable interface between the properties.
Thank you.
Good evening, Joe, I'm Sean Tannenbaum. Landscape architect consultant project. He's having a great. So I'm gonna start, I'll go through, you know, any minor changes. Get more reactions to some of the stuff that Scott mentioned, so I'll start kind of in the north parking lot there, I could do in there, and then we'll go counterclockwise. South, by itself, and we'll go back to where we started. So north parking, since we last showed this to you, of course, this expanded a little bit. We're still preserving that nice basket of existing trees up there. And moving the transport out of that situation. So between the rail trail and the extended parking, where we're showing there now, it's a nice like buffer, shade trees. Big stories for service berries, and then brown plain plantings, they came very, that's right. There is one of those, if you wanna go to each slot, yes. This is zooming a little bit, it's a, it's a view of what that will look like. You know, a couple of years after. Sort of separates the rail trail from the, the, the poses parking. Right next to the horse to buy, of course, stays where it is. It's a view, kind of walking down a little bit the park, chasing to the. And then looking back towards the park, I mean, this is kind of the area that starts to work out, towards the other two paths to go up. To the retail plus. Zoom back in there. And then moving, moving along that rail trail edge there, some minor modifications to that seating area. We think it's a little, it's a little nicer. And then, of course, those two paths leading up to the plaza area are still there. They haven't changed, what we did there was introduce some seating on the right leg of the name. Show that on board, and then on the left leg, we have more bike park. And increase that. As we continue down bike trail. The alcantepec stays as it is. Then that existing. Half moon scene area means, that is repaving it. And then there's that walk that leads up into the site towards the crosswalk that goes sort of around the, the roundabout there. We reconfigured that a little bit, we were showing that a straight shot up from that half moon. But given the increase of twelve inches, we needed to sort of get some extra run there. So there's that. Sloped walk. With that little bit of an addition. And as we keep moving down the rail trail, we still have the whole. Level area for. Any exercise of it at the city might put in the future, that's certainly hashed area there. And then what's forgotten here is a pad, so that'll be leveled up that, that pad there that we're seeing. And then at some point, city remain. But that concrete, I mean, that would be a bike shared location, it's kind of the element that was initially shown. But this project would just rail. Seating. And then on the south side of that rail trail. There's an addition of planting there. By this, it's a country of society. Where we're implementing is just planting. As, you know, just getting a little more upper screen and edge. And think that that's, that wasn't shown previously, that's shown in. And then Scott mentioned, drive into the project, reconfigured some of my. Planting on that edge, train rail trail, and then to drive. Sure, pretty enforceable, it's planting. Then if we go up, start at the path that goes between the adjacent property on the plan. You know, there, yeah. That all remains the same as previously shown. There are some modifications we did, because obviously with the transformer has been relocated, so, you know, we had to move some, some walls and seed areas around. But essentially, all the elements that were there are still there. And then as we continue up towards Route One. We still have circular space along Route One. The only change there is that we reduced some of the. Stone walls that show for, we still have walls, can zoom in just a little bit. We still have those walls sort of defining that immediate space, but as we were looking at it, it felt kind of heavy. With these, with these other walls, we have these, these rail paths that are parallel to the walks. So we took those out. We think it kind of improved the openness a little bit, while still kind of providing some sense of enclosure on that. Then if we continue on. Scott mentioned that, that we configured a little bit. And so we responded to that with. Relocating the sidewalk. Sort of changing that buffer between Route One and sidewalk. So that the sidewalk was sort of outboarded of the property. And then also a change about that edge is because the, the building. Elevator came up, floor elevator twelve inches, we need to accommodate accessing. To those events points. And so we added some oxygen, those are, the reason why they're straight up, of course, because we wind up slows. Blocks there, so we needed to run to do that. And along that edge, we originally have. Hillstone law, almost contiguous along the back side. So given the changes of property and how that those lots in there. You know, we would have had to break up that wall. So we sort of removed that, scaled it back quite a bit. And that stone wall is down, the vehicle exit at the corner from the retail space that's posted. And thinking about most of the changes, lighting has not changed in terms of light schedule. Locations of lights were adjusted somewhat, but there's a major departure from what we've been showing, again, from light fixtures, light schedule.
On, on the, just a quick question, it may necessarily be landscape, but on the, they, the exit at this, on the Route One side, in the center of the building. It goes out and there's, those are steps down, there's a ramp on the side, that's the configuration.
Yes.
Right, so those are, those are steps down. Okay, I just wanted to confirm.
None of these, none of the walks on this edge are technical, they're all slope walls.
Thank you, Scott, thank you, Joe. So the only way to think of the landscape plan is in that corner. One of the previous plans did show that sidewalk crossing the, and the exit to the parking lot and then continuing through that green space. Before my time, I looked at it and said, this is a sidewalk to nowhere, firing a building sidewalk to nowhere, because it's gonna drop someone off. You know, at the edge of the site where there isn't a sidewalk, so that piece of sidewalk is removed. Follow what I was talking about, if you're following sidewalk from kind of south to north, it now makes sense, perhaps you back around to the amenity area and accessibility to the rail trail. And then the other thing to point out, just because the plan isn't highlighted anymore, but the older plans did, is that connectivity from Hill Street can cross through the site and down through to the. Rail trail is still maintained, Joe kind of walked you through with that.
Okay, again.
The, I'm sorry, the, thank you, Andy's highlighting it, so on the previous site, we called it out. Went into the connectivity from Route One and Hill Street along through ours to the rail trail. It just isn't called out, I'm not displaying anymore, but that connectivity is exactly the same, it's still. Just right.
So it was, okay, that was one of the questions. In the previous plan. Because you didn't control the site, that sidewalk really, really narrow. Now you're showing a full width side. I mean. The state is giving you more land. How are you getting a full width?
So we had, we had an agreement with Mass DOT to work that sidewalk, create that sidewalk when it goes to them. I don't think that one would change.
You look at your previous plan here, it's much narrower.
This year, you have permission to do a whole more landscaping here on this front. Which is, I think, is that landscaping you're referring to?
Second plan. You have one of those here? That's the up there, you're ready to hang wire, it's a very narrow side.
Yeah.
And so, so you couldn't, you told us to.
Oh, oh, yeah. Yeah, there's, yeah, yeah. Thank you, I wasn't sure.
The, the issue there is the land's actually owned by Ashley Cross. So DOT has said it has to happen this way.
So, so you're gonna, you're gonna build it that way?
We're doing it that way, and the owners, the, we, the relationship between the two parties hasn't been very good. Mr. Pinakuchi has been in direct correspondence with them. We, you can see with the, the limited work is actually into their property, we're gonna be doing landscaping and kind of blending it into their property.
So you have, you have. Also, this is on the site.
Yes.
That is actually part of our plan, you're gonna be, that's gonna be.
Yeah, it wasn't before, but we're working to blend these together, there's a lot of overgrowth and it's kind of a gnar, especially in the northerly side there. It's not, not the British shade, it's kind of a. So, bittersweet vines, it's kind of awesome.
So on the, not on the illustrated time, but on the engineering landscape. You're actually showing all this landscape, it's actually part. So on the. On the south side of the building. You're showing a number of trees, but those are just listed, those are things that you're proposing. Say between the brewery and the park. That's just, those are just showing. All those trees here, that's not something you're doing, that's just showing.
Those are showing the existing trees, and then you do have included in your back of the whole landing plan.
And so the, and the, the connection from. That is essentially gonna be a public. Yes, is there an easement, or are you just saying, we're gonna make?
We're allowing the public to go through, we haven't discussed an easement for that, I don't know if that's.
It's, it's an important connection, so I mean, we really haven't. It's, it's an important connection, so I mean, we really haven't.
It's something we can continue to discuss with the city, because we'll have to go through the, the discussions to iron out the issues, or not issues, but. The reciprocal easement, so we can build parking spaces and maintain it on the city as access, et cetera.
And, and just for clarification, the, the, the dash line, it's essentially a limited work, light dash line is your property line?
I think that's right, so the red dash line.
It's all the person that's black.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a double short long.
And, and yes, that's right. Yes, and, and I think it's a fantastic example of the kind of partnership that this project is. An example between the city, ourselves, the property owners, to be able to make this happen, and we're just. Just really excited that it's worked out, and we're able to improve the rail trail, improve the neighborhood, and build this stuff.
That's great.
And just so you know, the, uh. The bike share station pad was excavated on Monday. It will be poured as soon as we get cool.
Have you read that?
Yeah.
We're actually looking at a, an eBay, an eBay. Remembering before on our property.
With better mobility?
Yeah.
Second idea here.
Um, I can talk to you offline and show you, but somewhere on the three Boston Way, so you can very close to the train station. Yeah, we're trying to get as close to the. In the trains. Any questions on landscaping or civil? We can always jump back to it, I have a couple of architectural things to go through.
I, I do have one question, I, I was not on the board when this was created, and so I'll be differing a lot. As to intent and, and my approach, but if I had been on the board at the time, the only thing I would have jumped up to is. Is the, is the location and not suggest you should change it, because it's too, too far down the road for that, but. People whip around the corner of Hill Street, so just to the right of your plan, to the right off that sheet. You know, Hill Street comes down and there is no stop sign at that hard right turn. And people would be there, yeah.
But there are some, yeah.
So, that's my question.
There are some improvements associated with the project that are already incorporated or aren't being discussed tonight at all.
We didn't change, yeah, there, there's a, this whole plan of filing, your wizard planning director will probably pull it up.
Your spot, the decision was discussed from the initial.
Yeah.
But it actually happened immediately, they will take a second to dig up, but there's a plan that shows the improvements required at that intersection.
Also, so it's off-site mitigation, it's.
Off-site.
It's part of this project.
Yeah.
It's the same way here.
I think it's, I think it's a pattern, uh.
It, it, the, the, the long radius on the turn is to accommodate trucks committed to the industrial, the, the business park.
Yeah.
Uh.
Which allows the people to go.
So we couldn't shorten the turn to make more of a ninety, so we, we have a rumble strip in the straight big incineration, could deter the regular passer cars from moving around that corner. Uh, next, yes.
And that's, it goes away as a condition from this, this is not tweaking it.
Very good.
It actually, but.
I'm actually relieved that, I didn't know that was a problem, because that's. So that's what happens.
I can't remember whether keeping gun, it's part of the advanced warning for the. Is there something that was?
Might get on the call.
I remember that was a.
They were, they were already really good, um, the process system there was very advanced when it was put in. Um, it, it detected people walking there, flashes, signage. We did widen the sidewalk to eight feet and, uh, connect it to the city product that takes it out through one, so like the full corner was enough, there were a lot of sightline issues there before.
And maybe, maybe just tightening up that curve from Hill Street. Remove some of the concern of our C.
It's also a little blind right now, you can't see it as volley overgrowth in that corner, so that's all going to be cut after.
It's gonna be a lot more visibility. Yeah, from all of the initial.
They tried about.
That's, uh, I think the outcome was that the radius from One Boston Way was tightened up, it's really aggressive, so you can't turn that, so you have to take your time.
But I'm thinking more than Hill Street side. Exactly, pretending it was.
Yeah.
You know, right through the street, like, she. It's slow down to those cars that is.
That degree of instant gratification is very, that's awesome.
Sure, it was an instant at the time.
Well, I'm new to this, so it was great. Since the.
As we went through the architecture plans, and we can, of course, jump back to, well, and tell me how interested you are in this, but. Um, we made a couple of changes to the interior of the building, we had some, um, sort of pockets from spaces, we didn't really get used in our other projects on the third and fourth floors. We incorporated those into the adjacent unit and made, um, more three veteran units, so, you know, two more three veteran units than we had before. That's a new part. We also, throughout this process, looked really closely at this entire building. Uh, this entire project in light of the economic realities that we're in right now, in terms of interest rates, construction costs, et cetera. And so some of the changes you heard tonight, most of them, we think are making this project better. But some of them are also looking at how can we make this project, that's maybe possibly be, but actually get it in the ground. Um, and so one of the changes we're making to simplify the building is, we had a green roof garage. A ramp, so this ramp that goes down into the garage, from the parking area, and that was just proving to be a whole timeline, and we didn't think it was worth the benefit of the budget. Doesn't change the drainage doubt issues or anything like that, um, but that green roof we removed. Um, we had some nice looking, we had some steel balconies on there. Um, and what we've done in here as well, what we're proposing is to change the balconies that we have, we have both Julia balconies. We have the old actual balconies that stuck out, the, the exact dimension of a few, and we're changing them all to Julia. Um, it's a simpler design, it achieves the same look, uh, in terms of how residents use them, we find. We have a huge amount of different balconies, and it does save some significant, I mean, while keeping the same look of them. Talking about, and then, uh, just some, the commercial building was a, was a brick building, leaning and doing it with. Some of the same metal panel that the building has rather than the brick. Those are the major architectural changes that we're making now.
What, what is the roof of the?
So the roof will be a metal roof, and it'll actually match what was going on in the commercial. And it's still, as it was before, there's a decorative, decorative and functional fence that keeps people from access. Oh, it's just like it was when it was very. Exactly, because it dives down into the ground, but needs to be protected.
The rendering issue?
Yes. This is still.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the three D.
But that, but we got certain.
Yeah, so.
Always when I, when I run these Zoom meetings and I use it, it'll be like.
Oh, I gave you, I gave you lots of money, it was. I'm just saying.
Oh, it is this last.
You know, you go around here often. And you can see it on the landscape drawings, I don't think it looks too different, you're like, on the right wing. If you're in the drop offs file, rendering is the first and last image. That's the new next. Well, we didn't change everything on this rendering, so I think some of the balconies are still on there. This is not a fully updated rendering, I'm just showing you that garage room. We're really excited to get this one going, it's been a long time on our hands, and it was a very long time, a lot of work, we heard it back in the day, so. We can't wait to make this artistry look better, build this project, we have time, we're excited to start. Happy to answer any more questions, concerns you have about these proposed changes.
Yeah, just a, just a comment, the seventeen public spaces is awesome, that's great, for the ground ground, that's a huge addition to the city. And much needed in that area, which is a lot of the parking public, great.
Thank you, we think so too, we're really excited about it, because we know people use it every day now. And so we're, we're getting more of that, and it's better, because right now it's, you know, all the highways. I know we're the owner of the property, but you know, it's not beautiful, so we need to assess the good parking spaces there. Yeah.
It bonds about who occupies the amenity building.
Right, there are big conversations, it looks like it's leaning towards a local ice cream shop operator, I just don't know exactly. I don't think we've inked anything yet, so that's where we're leaning, and hopefully we'll be beyond ice cream. I think that there's eat ice cream year round anyway, but hopefully it does be on the ice cream, other than things. That, that's all.
Let's just ask a question procedurally, do we need to deem, deem this minor, almost in addition to?
I think it's worth incorporating that in your motion, yeah, just, yeah.
So, we're moving, uh, move to deem this modification minor to approve the request for the minor modification. For the smart purpose, and for, uh, one sixty-six, one sixty-eight, we want.
Second.
Um, yeah, because you have a little. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, man. Okay. Um. I. Yeah, uh.
You don't mind me here, if you want it? Um, yeah, quick synopsis, so it's, it's been a little bit, there's a bit of gap in time between, uh, when we last did this. But, um, quick synopsis, this, uh, grab here is intended to incorporate the substance of comments, there was a, a, a lengthy dialogue in the playing board it had. With some of the, uh, tweets that we also got feedback, legal counsel, a lot of good things, and trying to incorporate the marketing of that, it was a sort of relapping of a few things, but. It asks, the bullet list here is intended to pro- incorporate the substance of items, so what the playing board had. There's a last note in number nine, or something, or more housekeeping language changes, which are, because there are other suggestions that were made by, a few by staff, a few by legal counsel that aren't directly mentioned, or directly. Right, the playing board report, those are reflected in a markup version, and it's expected to be given to the playing and development committee of the city council along with the playing board report. To do this, regurgitated, um, to go together, and the idea there is that the city council, going to the playing and development committee meeting next week. Can look at the, uh, changes that have been done since the original, uh, sponsored version of the amendment, uh, and essentially. But Eric sanity try to, just to clarify where some of the changes are coming from, this sort of made it, I'm happy to kind of go through it. Uh, but it's, it's basically blue changes coming from the playing board, uh, primarily the purple colored, you know, the. And that markup is coming from the legal council and the ones that are sort of just generic, I think, the office planning development, and are the longer markup for green. Um, but I think the most important thing here is, uh, the written narrative of what, what were the whole substance of things that should be changed. There was dialogue where a few days got, uh, questions they've got to answer, or things that weren't, didn't resolve the changes, but this captures the things that were discussed, very good requests, it was the. Um, but that's the, I think, you want to discuss that bullet list, to see if that's comprehensive, if this is, that here you are.
I just remembered, this was a wonderful way to sound.
Yes.
Yeah.
So thank you for this, but. I think that's it.
It's the issue.
Any questions or comments?
So, yes, question, number five.
Yeah.
Have you come down the decision about this, because we should consider doing this?
Yeah, sorry, great idea, so in the markup version here, we had to talk with the sponsor. Um, the version, and the markup version incorporates this very, uh, specific, so there was an example, we had a couple of different ideas that were touched at the time, and in the thresholds here.
Yeah.
This one that's illustrated here is the one that's incorporated into, um, the markup.
Okay.
So, um, max size, or a lot of it is a maximum size, one size, one size. Size, well, it's been a total, it's very strict. Um, you can have a whole spectrum of debate about what sides are more partial, the side of producing, the side of script footing, but there's all that, so. You know, free room speech and, uh, you know, having enough area to work with and so forth, so. Um, for things like this, a whole spectrum of side we're discussing, but they were talked about the yard side. That's what we.
So, so the, the tall size things, right?
The tall size, what's in the market for the city council, I don't know what they want to, they don't want to change from there, but the sponsorship is good with that, uh, as, as a sort of landing version. About legal counsel on that one, to come back, and again, this was some variety of ideas, you know, in this case, we look out to bring back this, some, you know, suggested language and so forth, that would. Uh, may it through on twenty, script B, talking to sort of pressure, we had to, you know, discuss with the sponsor. So it, more consistent.
More sense. To make it a free to open the sign.
I don't disagree, it's nothing like, I'm so, I'm so happy with the idea of increasing size and size, that, like, I'm okay with it, really easy, you know? If somebody wants to propose here to make it thirty-six.
What is the standard, what is the standard bonus?
We let people give different numbers, I, you know, uh, some councils, it's the eighteen twenty-four, uh.
So, so. So, on the twelve square feet. This is the, this is the.
Yeah, yeah. And we have a different level of how much water they're willing to accept, and how much it goes necessarily in the previous future, and something else was about the process election year, and. You get so many different candidates per council, as well as school, city, and so forth, so it's all, it's debated about, I'm just, I'm, 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 I'm.
So, what do you?
Uh, well, if you want a motion to issue the advisory report for the city council from the.
It's going to be.
Second.
Then, then go. Both.
Have you, who was the minutes from seven to, that's, that should be.
He's already.
Yeah, they were.
They're perfect.
Yeah.
No comments on the last second. That'll be good. So, I think you can move that. Andy, you want to talk about correspondence?
Uh, yeah, I know, just briefly. You got, um, the, you may recall, it's only one of the deals, obviously, handling the point my story, I mean, project, uh, but in terms of, uh, you brought here. Feedback on the playing board going into that project, to the CBA, so. You might take a, kind of think of it as regaining, you might get a comment, once you have the CBA dollars in there. Uh, so again, uh, correspondence, you're related, you know, you're not correct, but like that.
Which, which Smith was that from?
Uh, like, is it Owen or from? Why was it just recently?
Somebody's near this.
Um, kind of the blood walls project, um, maybe there's, that, right, I don't, um, I didn't start, we're, it's all this, but like, who knows, which, about which project, it's everything. Um, that project was presented, it's one walls, uh, on the Lambert side, a side from the firm that's built like that. To protect the treatment plan, and so there were a couple of comments that concerned, or bothered, just concerned about, you know, what does that do, uh, in terms of trapping water, or blocking water, or. But I think that it's been sufficiently, uh, taken into account, but I think we'll have to clear the wire, so, uh, get some sort of water presentation, and there's a plan to that, and. Uh, and it does certain remarks for this kind of reason, but, but I, I'm sorry, I'm glad to put that. There was some concerns that we've heard from at least one or twenty of others there, of where they're putting the walls, is, is that, is that perceived as somehow. Trapping water adjacent properties, uh, I don't think at the end of the day that that's actually how it works, what's happening there, partly because everything will be flooded at that point in there. Yeah, and the door itself is already, sort of, the upper part of the wall there. Uh, but, yeah, you've got to walk through, uh, like, I think, actually, the other gray changes, I just put it down, I understand, and this diner, it's, it's here, but. In the presentation of the water, that the, uh, tree design team presented to the approximation condition, there's a good illustration in the color, showing from there, showing. How flooding is before, after, and as you can see, it's not really increasing any flooding adjacent properties, it's just keeping it from getting into the, uh. The fair plan, it's such a huge, you know, area, like, but river of the ocean, that, like, flooded it. And the way that, the way I face it is, if, if. And the way that I see it is that if, if water were to be held out of the property by that wall, essentially, that becomes a thin sheet of water across the entire plane or surface of the rip from the ocean. And so the idea that it's somehow trapping only that little area of the adjacent property, that water isn't really that characterization of what's happening, but you have to kind of walk through it.
So that, that'll be at the west end of the thing, adjacent.
Uh they're concerned, we heard here, they're concerned, we heard here on this plane, I think, was mainly on the east side of the water walls, with a clarify of our. And where, on the eastern side of the treatment plan, that was.
Bottom of Brown Hill. It seems like you was counting the area of bottom of Brown Hill.
Yeah, closer, that's, yeah.
It seems, I was, because it seems sure they're not all along there with the, the, where it was raised for the rail trail, but it dips down at the American, yeah.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, that's so.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's from the property owners on the east side, then you know, there'll be some concerns there. And again, I don't think it's, it actually something that's like a real issue at the end of the day, they maybe are plans, they also could have redirected some of the water piping around the tree, but the other direction. This actually, uh west side in order to uh park the address, it'll be a concern there. Um but at the end of the day, it's with east side.
So it'll be coming back from the rail trail towards.
Yeah.
Water Street.
Correct. Yeah, walls, yeah, yeah, and the um the presentation that was given to the preservation commission is part of their meeting. Uh they, they, that presentation had a couple of color, color, you know, spat, rendering showing what that wall would look like, and it's essentially. The American Jack will have become shorter as we reach uh near Water Street. It comes like a sea walls in that way, right?
Well, we don't, this is really just our information, it's not.
Yeah, there's nothing that's before you, something. I did have to interrupt the audience briefly, uh it, it's all right with you and depending on the agenda, I didn't actually with the chair, but. Um the residency committee and I think Rick was involved with some of this, but we had a developed a residency checklist. Yeah, so this is just briefly um on Open Go. This is by your time, just gonna say where it is, if you want to take a look, but um if you are on, if you're on Open Go. And so you, you, you're under the planning board, the conservation commission page, for instance, then you go with permit, you land in the Spain here. Uh as the main page, you might go over to conservation commission or. Playing more protect the permit you need, but what we've done here is we've developed in the residency committee, a draft checklist of questions that applicants could fill out in applying to these boards for permits. That would help to focus our residency managers, trying to, you know, examine a little more of the applicants, what they're looking into their projects. And that's kind of, they could be questioned, I mean, the main thing would be, but the goal, the desire of the group was to try to have something that could be added to applications that allows both the applicants to, you know, examine and be forced to sort of explore, then a little bit further, how much they look, those techniques and tools. Um and as they do their projects and also give somebody the word to look at, when time to applicants, I think the natural up of that down the road might be some specific regulations that are incorporating standards that go beyond what we currently have. The bugs might say, you're, you know, required to do X, Y, or Z, but I think that the idea here was a starting point for that. So, and long story short is, at the end of that listing of different provisions where you like, we have a test portal. And so um Dan worked on this and basically the back end, taking, we, we worked, wordsmithed, we worked together, different variation of this, but right now there's a draft application, sort of this component that we've been building out, you like, like a, but a school, you know, patient after one worksheet is going to uh residency questions. And it's sustainability type questions, and so the techniques that they're using, you've got to run through this uh example. So the question here, I guess, was like, if we are, whether we're trying to get feedback to, because part of this is determining whether boards will make this requirement of an application. And that's something the residency committee can decide, that's something that would decide, that's a mission, you can say, um or the city council, that's something we can, so we have to decide, you know, and it starts down like any other regulation or application process. So it seemed to make sense that you run through with the planning board, conservation commission at these respective meetings coming up. Um at a time, you know, the end of the agenda, run through the checklist, uh get, you know, questions, proposals, thoughts, so if you have time, you want to run through it. And you want to put together thoughts, questions, you know, uh some of you have been involved already in my area, so sort of. Um some of you, it may be rushed to you, but we'd be able to walk, we just kind of see, you know, what is this going to do? Um the pros, cons, benefits, uh you know, weaknesses, where are we thinking of make tweaks, are we ready to roll that out, you know, that kind of thing. Um because it just, it, it isn't something that the residency committee isn't evaluating before it could back, if it's something that people pull up as mandatory, I think, what does that look like, what does it do? Uh what are those going out, you know, as productive and so on, you know, how to utilize it more. So uh it seemed to make sense to us, we'll do that, and that will work, it will work. Actually, there's one check. Trying to give the feedback, that is, see what makes sense in that, like, of all the others. So if it works for a room, we can put it at the chair, but trying to figure out, it doesn't have a lot, maybe like, you know, if you have a date, you know, late night, you're running through that, this is your boss, if you have the power to do that.
I wonder how lot, how much this is meant to. Might be interesting, might not be good, it's maybe a bit of a, to, to show us how an applicant uses Open Go. We see the end result.
Yes.
Because what you're doing is adding something, potentially adding something onto an application.
Yeah.
What's already in it.
Point, actually, it came up in our discussion too, was just, just even for board members and for all of us, saying, we, we need to do, you know, both the application process. Just to see what an applicant sees as they go through the process, right? So you're like, next, you, you know, say you have a great, have, have one, you're applying for a permit, you know, to see what that application process looks like. So you see, you know, step one, you're basically, step two, you know, you're making a property, so to see what that looks like for them, because there's a realistic implication for them and for you, you know, what you're getting in the talent, but also what they're going through. One of the things that I saw tonight that concerns me, and I want to clean up as much as we can on board is, like, on a project like Mingos, like bigger projects, we have just a gazillion plans being added to the record. And it's very important for all of us, at the end of the day, to know which is the plans that have been improved and. Uh unfortunately, when applicants start to mix and match, which PDFs they're uploading, different plans, that's due, that creates a little bit of confusion. So one of the things as we talk, it goes like bingo or, you know, any other projects like this, to try to make sure, part of it's, we can constrain on the open up system. And part of it's instruction to applicants for maybe a bit of a process with them, but uh we're using all this weekend and people are organized, but we can't, people, the applicant probably, it would be the applicant might. So trying to make sure that people are organizing it properly, we're not getting necessarily overloaded with uh a chaotic representation or application, you know, set of materials, because some of these applications, you have a ton of attachments to them. And it's supposed to be that a plan set replaces the previously submitted plan set, if they started adding something about a plan set for them, it current search created a problem, people are getting staff, like decisions, refresh, everything's new, you know, things that make it very complex. Um so it's a thing to be worked on, think literally, because the following tool doesn't allow us to, I, I, we sort of bump ups, we have to deal with it, and so it's probably in charge of that. Partly force you with applicants getting a bit of time to do less than, or if you're the jumble.
Wait, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
When did the applicants start posting their own documents on Open Go? Uh Open Go, I guess.
When we rolled out Open Go, I mean, at this point, when we rolled out Open Go, that was when they started uploading directly.
Okay.
Um and then we sometimes saw that, like, we did public comment or comments from here view, we'll be the ones that end up with the documents, but for the most part, it's the applicant uploading it here.
So that doesn't surprise me, because I think that's when I noticed the, like, the sequence of documents and files got noticeably more difficult to follow, because each applicant's kind of putting in a bit of a difficulty.
Or, yeah, we've talked, we, we constantly have this dialogue internally, we'll be trying to add a little note to an application process, we'll open up, they grow as they're free, you know, is there a tool we can prevent somebody from uploading this, collecting this properly? Some tools are in the, maybe it's vendor, so you know, which many you think that there's always a situation, so um sometimes we're trying to provide better instruction or something like that, but to me, this is definitely a work area for us, it's to make sure that. There's no reason for them to upload a new site plan set as a further down attachment in the listing, it should be version two of the site plan set that was uploaded. And it's actually the same identical plan sheet, so that we're not all shuffling crap, right? But if they start messing around with that stuff, it becomes a big jungle and we all have to sort out, all right, is that, this plan revised, should we date this, the longer the hearing process goes, the more plan sheets that people keep submitting, um you know.
We would also add to that the um in inconsistent file naming.
Yes.
Um and for the American street project, this time there were three or four uploads.
Yeah.
They, they were, they were compressed somehow, but you, they look like the exact same file, three different times.
Yeah.
And it may have been the file name was so, so long, it, it, it took out all the middle characters.
Yeah.
But I think if we had that, you know, some way to force.
Yeah, we can, I think one of, so one of the, we've talked about, one of the things we can do is we can give like a proper picture, like, you know, filing, you know, or also, but. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, um it's still a little bit of police attention that people actually follow through properly with that, because the CBA is a little after times, they, you know, you start to come out of the record. Actually, because people are always in some, right, so they, they're rushing something, they're trying to get about the deadline, they're rushing, and it's, we're still trying to juggle, you know, fix up the juggle on that point. And it might be a point where you as a board want to say to the applicant, look, we're not, we're not moving ahead with this hearing, we might, we're not considering your voting on this, because we're going to.
I think the engine, each engineering firm might have its own internal naming system and.
They do.
And there's no way to, I mean, it's, it would almost seem if we had a, it may not be possible to do this, to put it down, to put it down the same, but if it's a site plan, simple plan, you choose this name.
Yeah, unfortunately, there isn't a tool with that, but that's why they're like, at least we can give instruction saying like, when we submit site plan, name it this, you know? And then, of course, Open Go depends to it the day they upload it or five, you know, stamp it.
I think the bigger, I mean, we can navigate it, it's tedious, but I think if I picked up on the public after this issue, with like knowing what's the latest.
What's the latest version?
Yeah. I don't, I'm hearing that part more.
Yeah, I, I, I've noticed the big one that's really bothering me, concerns me, because we should not all have the personal. Now or anytime in the future, it's on the administrator, the billing, you know, anybody down the road even, to determine which is the place on record and just keep operating the bird, and they don't care about the organization, they don't really care about getting in about the time, bringing in the meeting. And, you know, we shuffle out and deal with the rest of it, we need to push back a little bit, to make sure they do, even work on it, at every opportunity. It's harder with the, you know, like, like Amerimax. And then I wish it July ninth, revised submission of plans that didn't exactly track with all the documentation, so then we presented tonight was a different. But yeah, I just talked about changes and I mean, it's, there are many different formats and.
Yeah.
Versions of them, for really be able to. I agree, I also think the distinction between, you know, they, every, they're different, some applicants are, you know, presenters, we see it on a routine basis, we don't bother doing, but like, having a uh. Gazing different new versions and renderings or drawings are in the presentation, but are not actually record drawings, that also creates confusion, I, it's just kind of the maintenance, because there's a lot of great illustrations, it's a picture project. But when there starts to be a jungle in there, that's confused with what's the record plan and what's the detail line, and then there's inconsistency with the canopy or some other, you know, one drawing that, you know. Again, trying to, you know, I, I appreciate being used, have some kind of history things in an official presentation, but I'd rather have a simplified consistence that of plans and base, and then only add to that what's necessary, so that it doesn't create confusion, which is part of that, just trying to change. Yeah, just, yeah.
Are you able to create folders where it's like there's official documents submitted and then illustrated plans for presentation?
Without unpacking the whole software package, every vector is different, like, there's no perfect software, frankly, you know, I wish the government would, you know, we don't all, like, develop our own software, but, but, but there's no perfect way to deal with that. We can make a specific, like, what the PM is supposed to have, but we even have people, this is not, it's one of the wrong materials with the PM, that's, you know, site plan, that, you know, slotted in this board, but. You know, another couple of other instances is like, it's not even right, the document is supposed to be there, and it's like, well, your application is incomplete, so you can correct that issue. But yeah, it all comes out in part. There you go.
Motion to adjourn.
And Matt, why didn't you vote on this? All those.